I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome, and I'm glad a big crowd came tonight, shows involvement in our city and ordinances, and in what's affecting your neighborhoods and the town we live. Just want to thank you for that. Today's date is Monday, October the 24th, and this is the City of Tuscaloosa zoning board of adjustment meeting. I'd like to start by introducing myself. I'm Rob Stewart. I'm currently the vice chairman of the zoning board of adjustment. And to my left, if I could have Ms. Coley start.
Michelle Coley, supernumerary.
Paul Rollins Jr.
Andrew Robertson.
And if I could, I'd like to acknowledge all of our city staff who's here with us tonight, starting with Ms. Emily Hayes, our neighborhood resources coordinator, Mr. Jonathan Bowen, planner, Ms. Angie Terrell, administrative assistant in the back, also Mr. Otto Tumokamo, assistant city attorney, and from engineering.
I'm Brett Lightbridge, filling in for Michael Gardner.
Glad you can join us tonight. And also in the back is Mr. Kevin Jones, helping with our video production. The Board of Adjustment does not have the authority to enact zoning laws or special exceptions, nor does the Board have authority to rule on claims of equal protection of the law for the fairness or unfairness of any zoning ordinance. By virtue of state law and city ordinances, the purpose of the ZBA is as follows: to hear appeals from decisions of the zoning officer of the city, to grant special exceptions to the zoning code in accordance with the terms as established by the city council, grant variances from the terms of the zoning code when owing to the special conditions a literal enforcement of the code would result in an unnecessary hardship, and so the spirit of the zoning ordinance can be observed and substantial justice done per Alabama Code 11-52-89, 1975, and City Code Section 24-193. It may be helpful for the petitioners and the public to understand that in regard to what is an unnecessary hardship. No one factor determines what is an unnecessary hardship, but all relevant factors, when taken together, must indicate that the plight of the premises in question is unique and that it cannot be put reasonably to a conforming use because of the limitations imposed upon it by reason of its classification in a specified zone. Variances should be granted sparingly and only under unusual and exceptional circumstances, when a literal enforcement of an ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship. The reasons for granting a variance must be substantial, serious, and compelling. Circumstances that are not considered hardships are self-inflicted or self-created, and just simple inconvenience, or personal or financial. A variance may not be granted where the property owner merely suffers a financial loss of the kind that is common to all of the property owners in the used district. Loss of future rent that is common to all property owners similarly situated is not an unnecessary hardship for variance to be granted. The main question is whether, due to special circumstances, a literal enforcement of a zoning ordinance will result in unnecessary hardship. My working definition of an unnecessary hardship is as follows: the property cannot be put to any reasonable use under its current zoning classification. It must be a unique or peculiar difficulty relating to the property of a serious and significant nature. It must relate to the property and not any personal issues involving economic or financial gain or loss. The zoning board of adjustment by virtue of state law and City of Tuscaloosa ordinance does not have the jurisdiction or authority to consider, interpret, or enforce any term or condition of subdivision covenants and/or home association rules or regulations. These matters are therefore not relevant areas of inquiry by the Board on any petition. Such covenants or regulations are between the private parties involved and not the ZBA. That having been said, any decision made by the ZBA on any particular case does not necessarily preclude the enforcement of such subdivision covenants and/or HOA rules or regulations by other lawful means. If you wish to speak on any matter before the Board tonight, either for or against an item, and you are not the property owner or petitioner or designated agent, staff has been notified of your request, and you will have the opportunity to speak during the requested agenda item. This is a public hearing. It is being recorded, videotaped, and streaming live on the city's website, Facebook, as well as local cable TV. Proper decorum, civility, and respect for others is required at all times. When you are at the podium, please speak directly into the microphone and state your name and the address, and your address, for the record. All comments should be directed to the Board. No questions or comments are to be directed to city staff or other members of the audience. Any person wishing to speak on behalf of another person, group, or entity shall provide written authorization to the chairperson from the person, group, or entity being represented. Immediate family members defined for this purpose as spouse, parent, or child do not have to provide such written authorization when speaking on behalf of another immediate family member. The Board reserves the right to limit the time of remarks and comments depending upon the relevancy, redundancy, petitions, and lengthy sign-up sheets, and to preserve good order. And Ms. Hayes, this evening, we've got quite a few folks speaking, so we will be using a three-minute clock. That timer, you'll have three minutes to speak, for or against, and we will show on the screen behind me and the screen before us, we're mirroring what you're looking at, it'll have a timer, you'll get your time to speak, but we will limit that based on the number of folks in the audience tonight. I would ask the city staff to confirm for the record that all the appropriate and required public and individual property owner notices for each case upon the docket of petitions now before the Board have been made in accordance with state law.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. The following procedure will be followed for each petition tonight. This hearing is an opportunity for the petitioner to present their case, for the public to inquire and make their views known about the petition, and for the Board members to gather relevant facts before making its decision. City staff will introduce the petition and present facts and information to the Board concerning the same. The petitioner or the petitioner's designated agent will be asked to make comments and answer questions from the Board. The members of the public will then be afforded an opportunity to make inquiries and comments. At the close of public comments, the petitioner will be asked to respond to any comments if necessary. The Chair may then permit the public to respond not only to any new issues raised by the petitioner in their rebuttal. At the close of public comment, or once the Board is satisfied that it has received all the relevant information on a petition, the Chairman will close further public comment or discussion, and the Board will then discuss the matter and then vote on the petition. Our Board has a standing motion to approve. In regard to every request in a petition requiring a vote by the Board, there's a standing motion to approve the request, thereby not necessitating a motion or a second for each such matter. In response to said standing motion, the ZBA members, when polled by the Chair, may vote yes to the request or no to deny the request. Before the vote, thereon, any member may recommend conditions for discussion which, if it appears to be unanimous, thereon, the Chair will read into the record, Chair will read into the record, as conditions upon the standing motion to approve the request. Four votes are required to approve any motion. And you can see before you tonight, it's a little unique, we have four members. We have two, three absences tonight, two members and a supernumerary who couldn't be here. So in absence of that, we're still able to meet our quorum with four, but that will require a unanimous vote tonight to approve any motion. Normally, it would be four affirmative votes out of the five voting members. Yard signs that are in the affected property's yard of the petitioner, please leave those there. The city staff will diligently work to get those removed as soon as possible. Pursuant to Alabama Code Section 11-52-81, 1975, any party agreed by any final judgment or decision of such Board of Zoning Adjustment made within 15 days thereafter appeal therefrom to the Circuit Court by filing with such a Board a written notice of appeal specifying the judgment or decision from which the appeal is taken. In case of such appeal, such Board shall cause a transcript of the proceedings in action to be certified to the court to which the appeal is taken, and the action of such court shall be tried de novo. If a petition has not already been continued prior to the mailing of notifications to surrounding property owners, it may only be continued if the petitioner or the representative of the petitioner appears at the hearing in person to request a continuance. If the petitioner or the representative of the petitioner fails to appear at the hearing, the case will not be docketed for a later meeting until the petitioner has paid an additional filing fee. Continuances are for one month. The Board may, on its own motion, continue a hearing. The Board members have had a chance to review tonight's agenda items. Do any of the members have a conflict of interest with any of the cases on tonight's agenda?
No.
No. No. Okay. Ms. Hayes, are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
There are not.
The minutes, did you want to present the minutes?
If y'all had an opportunity to read over them, we don't have to present it. It's just the August 2021 and October 2021 minutes.
All right. We'll come back on that at the end of the meeting. Mr. Tumokamo, do you have a report in the city attorney's office?
Yes, just one appeal in Circuit Court, CV 000089, ZFNY versus City of Tuscaloosa's zoning board of adjustment. It's a bench trial, there's no, it's not on any docket right now in court, so it's just pending.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Hayes, you want to start with the first case?
So, just before we go into our first case, I'll give y'all a brief update on what we discussed at our framework meeting this month. So, we discussed off-street parking, bicycle parking, and loading standards. So, just the notable updates to parking and loading. Parking plans are required for all development applications that propose more than 10 off-street parking spaces. This requires development applications which include plans with sufficient information to demonstrate that each development complies with standards of the section. Today, this is handled through the land development permit process, and likely that will not change. There are also additional standards for pedestrian safety and minimum required parking organized in two tables. So, just some more notes on off-street parking. This section establishes standards for the off-street motor vehicle parking, which specifically includes general rules for surfacing lot design dimensions and other parking lot development standards, minimum off-street parking requirements for most districts, along with options that allow for the reduction of parking requirements by demonstrating through a parking study, and standards for vehicle stacking lanes for parking lots and drive-throughs to reduce conflicts between vehicles and pedestrians. So, this is that off-street parking table with the current standards, as well as the proposed standards. And as they were going through this process, they did discuss with the stakeholders some things that the stakeholders did identify, where bay parking on private property with backing into a public street is only approved by the city engineer, and maximum width for driveway is 20 feet, but can be widened at the entry of a garage or carport in the following districts. And another thing they identified is the minimum stall widths, and they are increasing from eight and a half, 8.5 feet, to nine feet, and two-way drive aisles are now up from, up to 24 feet from 22 feet. And this is just to account for modern vehicles being larger than they were in 1972. So, some other things that they did identify is electric vehicle parking spaces. With the current standard, they just feel as if that is a very high number, with it being all parking lots with more than 50 spaces requiring 2% as electric vehicle parking. So, they were kind of discussing on that of the best way to handle it, whether that be based on uses, or whatever it may be. They also were all about the off-street parking alternatives. So, parking reduction options, there are several options which allow for a reduction in the minimum required parking. A parking study can be conducted, which is allowing for up to 60% of a reduction, demonstrating through analysis that provides parking will support demand for mixed-use developments, allowing for shared parking up to 40% reduction on a comprehensive analysis of the types of uses being proposed. Off-site parking, allowing for up to 40% reduction using off-site agreements to provide additional parking. On-street parking, allowing a reduction of up to 12 parking spaces total for available on-street parking, and valet parking, which is allowing for up to 40% reduction for hotels or restaurants that use these services. So, just some notes on the bicycle parking and loading standards. For this section, it establishes those standards, which is establishing minimum requirements in certain zoning districts, and off-street loading standards are included to ensure adequate space and facilities for the loading and unloading of goods. So, this is that bicycle parking table. And then the fits and wall standards. So, the standards in this section regulate the location, height, materials, and design of fences and walls in order to ensure safety, security, and privacy of land, maintain visual harmony throughout neighborhoods, protect adjacent lands from indiscriminate placement of fences and walls, and ensure that fences and walls are appropriately maintained. So, just some notes, a majority of these standards are in our current zoning ordinance. There's just some minor revisions and updates, including clarification on applicability and administrative adjustments to fences and wall standards, which means that zoning board of adjustment should see less of these cases coming before you. Alignment with revised definitions and updated zoning districts, formatting updates for user-friendliness for regulations. And it's also adding a list of prohibitive materials, which are as follows, and also allows the Director of Planning to consider requests by landowners for security exemptions. And going into the lighting standards, this section consolidates and updates exterior lighting standards in multiple sections of the current zoning ordinance. A majority of these standards are in the current zoning ordinance, with minor revisions and updates, including the addition of graphics and images, supporting appropriate lighting standards, clarification of light trespass, and maximum illumination levels, requirements for specific lighting standards such as sports venues, pedestrian areas, canopy, floodlights, and decorative lighting, and then review procedures for unique lighting exemptions. So, the stakeholders did identify applicability to all new developments, which will make the LDP process significantly more involved and expensive. They wanted to include Alabama Power to its exemption list, and consider allowing a manufacturer's layout instead of an engineered plans to decrease cost. So, the next framework meeting is going to be on November 2nd, in which we will discuss planned development districts. Y'all have any questions?
So, basically, the changes across all of those mediums will basically reduce, hopefully, what we'll see.
Exactly. That's the plan.
Administrative approval based on those metrics.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. So, we decided we're going to hear this at the end of the meeting, correct? Okay. We'll just go ahead and skip through. So, cases to be withdrawn, ZBA 11722, the petitioner has requested that this be withdrawn. They are here to speak on them.
I'm Sherman Smith. We just request a withdrawal.
Sir, would you lean in just a little bit to the mic?
Okay. I'm Sherman Smith, and we just requesting a withdrawal.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Smith?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. We're going to read the petition. It's a withdrawal. In the matter of ZBA 117-22, Sherman Smith Jr. requests to withdraw the special exception to allow the short-term rental of property located at 5140 Woodland Trace, Zoned R4, Council District 6. Voting to withdraw, Ms. Coley?
Yes.
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 Petition is withdrawn.
Okay. We'll move on to our first case of the night to be heard. This is ZBA 10422. It was continued from last month's meeting. Jeffrey and Chelsea Henthorn petition for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at 3025 Fremont Drive, Zoned R1, Council District 5. Here's an aerial view of that property, as well as the zoning, and then a closer aerial view of that property. Just a couple of views from the streets, that large circular driveway. Applicable regulations, this is a new short-term rental request. The house is four bedrooms and three bathrooms, no violations or complaints. The request is for four vehicles and eight adults. If approved, staff recommends four vehicles and eight adults. Y'all have any questions for staff? We had one written comment in opposition, but we haven't received anything else.
I'm Chelsea Henthorn. My address is 3025 Fremont Drive.
Okay. If you would, please tell us about your petition, what your intentions are.
We would just like to be allowed to do a short-term rental. We have experienced this process before when we lived in Forest Lake, and it was a really wonderful process for us, and we really enjoyed it.
Do y'all currently live in the home full-time?
Yes, sir.
And have you ever engaged in short-term rental in the past?
Yes. We did it from 2016 to 2018.
Where did you do that?
325 18th Street.
Okay. And did you have, at the time, a business license from the City of Tuscaloosa?
It was before it was required. We went through Kim Roberts at the Bama B&amp;B, and she handled all that for us.
Okay. So, obviously, you have familiarity with it. What do you have now, or plan, as far as rules and regulations for the house?
We want to abide by all codes, rules, any kind of regulations that we have.
But have y'all prepared that yet for your home?
All, except for one code, which is the stairwell going up the front porch, which will be put in place next week.
And what have you, what will you do in a case of emergency?
Oh, we'll be available 24/7.
Okay. And will you, you said you and your husband?
Yes, yes, me and.
Will y'all be residing in the city during that time?
Yes, yes. We will be staying with friends down the street.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't see anyone signed up to speak either for or against. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward? Yes, sir. Just please come to the podium and state your name.
My name is Clyde Biggs. I live at 3026 Fremont Drive, exactly in front of this house, this petitioning for a rental. There's approximately 11 people that live on this dead-end street, and I've talked with everybody on the street, and nobody's in favor of it. It's a dead end. People don't, it's not much traffic, there's a lot of children that walk up and down the street, ride bicycles and what have you. This is not a rental piece of property. This is a residential piece of property. I've had no problem with people renting their house around the university, but it's a long walk from there to the stadium or any of the facilities at university. I don't understand why they would go that far to do a rental, personally. But if you see fit, that's your decision. But I come here with my hat in my hand, asking to turn this down, because we just don't want them renting to everybody that wants to rent. It's not a rental property. It's a residential property. Thank you.
Mr. Biggs, and I appreciate you coming tonight, thank you, and representing the neighborhood, but what specifically, you say you don't want it, and your neighbors agree, in agreement, you don't want it, but what specifically don't you want? You just don't want someone to rent a home?
The lady next to them on the north side of the house is approximately 60 feet from their house. She's 90 years old, and she says she doesn't want to hear anything after dark. Well, that's, you know, what her request was, and Rex Spruill, who is my next-door neighbor, said he wasn't in favor of it either. Of course, I asked everybody down there if they'd sign a petition, and they said they would. One guy said he has a rental property out at the university, and it worked real good. And he couldn't be against somebody wanting to have this rental property in our neighborhood, so.
Just to be clear, and this is for everyone's benefit, this is the first case, every existing ordinance that's on the books in the City of Tuscaloosa, and you mentioned the 90-year-old neighbor who didn't want to hear anything after dark, the current noise ordinances that we all have to obey are, will be equally put upon any citizen or resident or visitor in the city. So, from traffic issues to noise issues, you know, behavior that is deemed not appropriate, nothing is allowed. And I'll also go into it in a moment, but parking, now the street parking that is legal for residents or guests to park on the street, if this is approved, short-term rentals, their guests are not allowed to park on the public street. Whereas someone having a party or, you know, a family gathering, et cetera, could, in causing congestion, there's an extra, one of the many extra layers of protection that currently exists in the STR ordinance. So, noise and parking and things of that nature are actually, could be minimized, at least the parking. But noise is applicable and issue or complaint to any citizen.
Okay.
Or guest.
All right. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
I've got one more in the neighborhood coming up, so I'm just going to sit down.
Okay. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak for or against this petition? If not, we will close public comment and begin Board comments with Ms. Coley.
Thank you, Mr. Biggs, for your comments. With this, and with all short-term rentals, the City Council allows short-term rental all over the City of Tuscaloosa. And with this being a first-time rental in this particular house, but they've had previous experience in Forest Lake area, I'm inclined to be in favor of it, of eight adults and four vehicles. Normally, when somebody is their first time doing that, that's a lot of people, but because you've had previous experience and no complaints that are on record, eight adults, four vehicles, 30 nights, one year.
Yeah, I concur with my fellow Board member, Mrs. Coley. The home that was shown, if we could pull up, Ms. Hayes, the front, a street view, these are good-sized lots, beautiful home, it's four-bedroom, three-bath. What we also look at, and this will go forward on how we look at each petitioner's request, if you look at the parking, is the garage, or what I would use in this case, they have a circle drive with two egresses onto the front of the property, it's got a double garage. So, we don't ever like, or we don't allow, a car that, more than one car that has to be moved in any driveway. Because what happens is typically, if two people move, somebody parks on the street, and it defeats part of the teeth of the ordinance. So, in saying that, what I would suggest, I agree with Ms. Coley on the So in saying that, what I would suggest, I agree with Ms. Coley on the, the one-year term, eight adults, four cars, I would also like to, um, put in a condition that two cars park in the garage, the other two can park in the circle drive, um, for a total of 30 nights for a one-year probationary period.
I agree with other board members, I'm in favor of eight adults, four vehicles, 30 nights for the time of one year.
I agree as well, I'm in favor with staff recommendations.
In the petition, ZBA dash 104 dash 22, Jeffrey and Chelsea Henthorn petition for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at 3025 Fremont Drive, Zoned R1, Council District 5, with the following conditions, eight adults, four vehicles, a total of 30 nights, in a one calendar probationary year, uh, with additional, um, considerations that no accessory structures can be occupied at any time by anyone, and a city of Tuscaloosa business license must be obtained before operations begin, voting with Mrs. Coley.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
The petition was approved.
Okay, moving on to our next case that was continued from last month, ZBA 11022, Wyatt Morrow petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at 85 Circlewood, Zoned R3, Council District 6. Here's an aerial view of that property as well as the zoning, and then a closer aerial view of that property. View from the street. Applicable regulations, this is a new short-term rental request, the house is two bedrooms and one bathrooms, no violation or complaints, the request is for two vehicles and four adults, if approved, staff recommends two vehicles and four adults. Do you have any questions for staff?
No, thank you.
Good evening, I'm Tommy Bozeman, 303 Queen City Avenue, I'm representing Ms. Morrow from Championship Rentals LLC, as her designated agent.
Does the petitioner you're representing live in the home?
Uh, no, sir, she does not, that's why she has, uh, employed us to represent her in a property management situation. She, uh, lives in Ashburn, Virginia, and she, uh, does visit Tuscaloosa frequently because this is her home, but, um, she does also have, uh, several family members that live in the neighborhood, general area, as well as in the city of Tuscaloosa.
In your capacity, um, how many properties does your company manage, short-term rentals in the city of Tuscaloosa?
We presently have, I believe, six short-term rentals.
Okay, are you the primary contact if there was an issue, a maintenance issue, a police issue, an emergency?
Well, yes, sir, we have three licensed brokers in the state of Alabama that, that are all equal owners of our company, and we are all on contact at a central number, but I am usually the one that, that petitions the city for these, these projects to manage.
But, but do you reside in the city?
Yes, sir, I live at 303 Queen City Avenue.
And you will be the, the contact, that's what I'm trying to get to, who is the contact?
Yes, sir, it would either be myself, or Cindy Denny, or Chris Lee, we are all three equal owners, we all are all three residents of the city of Tuscaloosa.
Okay, um, I know you've got experience based on your statement in the city with six other properties.
Yes, sir, I was the first one to be given a short-term rental license myself, three years ago.
Yeah, I, I believe I remember you coming, coming before us, um, what about rules and regulations, have you prepared those, is that a standard, or has the, the?
We have a standard, you know, rules and regulations, obviously wanting people to abide by noise ordinances, you know, that the city has, as well as just being respectful, you know, with the other neighbors. Um, as you can see from the aerial map, this is, um, you know, it's a little bit of a tight community, but it's not like everyone's five feet from each other, there's a little space, probably about 35, 40 feet between each house. And, and she's done an excellent job, uh, taking three years to, two to three years to redo this house, it was done very well, and, uh, and she's also really, you know, updated the outside as well as the backyard, and it has a nice driveway for off-street parking as well, so there shouldn't be any parking issues.
Any other questions for Mr. Bozeman? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We don't have anyone, uh, signed up on the petition list for or against, is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward? No, okay, at this time, we will close public comment and begin board discussions with Mrs. Coley.
Okay, so this is a first-time rental, so I'm in favor of the four adults, two vehicles, uh, 30 nights and one-year probation.
Yeah, I agree with Ms. Coley, um, on all of the conditions, which is, again, standard in this case, the, uh, engineering, you know, just for everyone's benefit moving forward on the rest of the cases, also vets the parking in the driveway, and, and it's been discussed, so based on the street view, their review, I'm in favor of granting the same.
I agree, I'm in favor.
I'm in favor as well.
Okay. In the matter of ZBA dash 110 dash 22, Wyatt Morrow petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located 85?
Circlewood.
Okay, 85 Circlewood, Zoned R3, just, Council District 6, with the following conditions, four adults, two vehicles, a total of 30 nights in one calendar year, a probationary year, with the additional conditions of no accessory structures on the property can be occupied by anyone at any time, and the city of Tuscaloosa business license must be obtained before operations begin, voting with Mrs. Coley.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
The petition passed.
Okay, moving on to our last continued case from last month, ZBA 11522, Leah Alexander petitions for a use variance to allow cottage court duplexes on the property located at 530th Avenue East, it's the Elements, Zoned RD2, Council District 5. Here's an aerial view of that property as well as the zoning, then a closer aerial view of that property, this is in Alberta. And these are the eight properties that were, or the eight structures that we're focusing on. So applicable regulations, section 24, 343 Cottage Court, specifically, uh, section 24, 344, building types by district, uh, building types are allowed by district as set forth, it doesn't allow cottage court duplexes within the RD2 zoning district. The petitioner is requesting a variance to allow cottage court over-under back-to-back duplexes, this zone does not allow for duplexes, as I mentioned, they are allowed in higher density zones, however, rezoning is not a viable option as some variances would still be required. The current dwellings are four-by-four, four bath, four bath, the proposal is to convert eight of these existing dwellings right now, the most recent, um, into duplexes with a one-bed, one-bath unit on the bottom and a two-bed, two-bath unit on the top, the top unit will be accessed from an exterior staircase. The petitioner is also requesting the timeframe be tied with the owner of the property, rather than being limited to the six-month timeframe to pull a building permit, overall, density will be decreasing by one bedroom per unit, with the current proposal being a reduction from 166 beds to 158 beds. Parking will not change, it will remain at its current 166 parking spaces. If approved, this project would allow for greater workforce housing options in an area that was devastated by the 2011 tornado. So this is the example of the current floor plan. Give y'all a second to look over that, and this is the proposed floor plan with the first floor, one bed, one bath, and the second floor, two bed, two bath. Do you have any questions for staff?
So the density, the, the human density is a reduction of eight.
Right.
Parking stays the same.
Parking is, stays the same, they're not gonna touch it.
The overall footprint from the exterior remains the same.
Correct.
But you're creating-
They're just gonna put that exterior staircase.
Yeah, for the second floor, is there egress, but it's just changing, uh, for, for person, four-bedroom unit.
Right.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening, I'm Leah Alexander with Alexander Architecture, 5520 10th Court East, Northport, Alabama. This is pretty straightforward, uh, do y'all have any questions of me?
Can you go back to, uh, the aerial, please? So, um, the owner is looking to start the eight that were boxed, the next slide?
Correct.
So, you know, intentions to start with those to see how that works?
Yes, well, those are the eight that are available at this time, and the intention is as more become available to move forward with, with the others, or some, as, as more become available.
And, just curious, what's the, the motivation, because these are fairly new?
The motivation is that, um, there is a deficiency in workforce housing in our city at present in one and two-bedroom units, and the owner has seen that, he's, he's currently, he's caught, there are, um, tenants calling, people in the community, particularly the Alberta community, calling, uh, on a continual basis, looking for one and two-bedroom units. And you know that, that this owner has, has made a commitment to the Alberta community, he was one of the first ones that went in following the tornado and built a lot of properties, and so he has a commitment to the, to the Alberta community, and is trying to do something to help meet the, the need for workforce housing in that area.
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We don't have anyone currently signed up, is there anyone in the audience at this time who'd like to come forward to speak? No, okay, in that case, we're gonna go ahead and close public comment and begin board discussion.
I appreciate the owner's commitment to Alberta, um, I appreciate the properties and being converted into workforce housing, which is much needed in this community, I think it's a better use of the property. Um, I do see the need for the variance because of just the rule of not having cottage court and duplexes, and I think it's a better use of the project, I mean, of the property, so I'm in favor of it.
If I could, Ms. Hayes, under the, um, proposed framework and the, the use, um, map for the city, what will be recommended in that plan if it's approved, or when it's approved?
So, for framework and as like, things like this are moving forward to reduce the amount of times that you're gonna see things like this coming forward, ZBA, so with this district, I know that it's all gonna be classified as a residential district, it's all gonna be in the same, I'm unsure with the future regulations if it's gonna allow for a higher density, because these things are considered higher density, so I'm unsure if that's really gonna be factored into that or not.
I guess, um, a better question, the, as you stated earlier in your opening comments, the petitioner, even if this is rezoned, they would still have to come back for a use variance?
To, that is due to the density, so with higher density, it is restricting of the number of units that can be on a lot, and with this, I believe the restriction is set at about 12 dwelling units, and this would be at 18.
And that's just a, a formulaic by design, not to the, the head count, because they're actually reducing human density.
Right, but increasing-
Which, in theory, the car reduction, even though they're still allowed to park, could go down with a, if all adults, okay.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Uh, could you go back just to the aerial, the straight aerial? I think, Ms. Hayes, thank you, Ms. Hayes mentioned earlier, it's, every resident of Tuscaloosa knows the path of the tornado, and this area was devastated across here, uh, tracked right through there, uh, Juanita Drive to the west that's shown here was pretty rough back pre-tornado, there were a lot of incidences with crime and some other rundown apartments that have been wiped out, so a lot of habitat homes have gone in due west of this parcel, um, the developer had come before us when they built this originally, um, really took a stance in, in that area as far as his investment, and is trying, and the formula has changed because the markets changed, but I think based on a lot of what the city's looked into and what we all know, um, workforce housing is tough, and a lot of the student-based type, uh, footprints, floor plans, is what this was built as, and I believe, Ms. Hayes, there have been two other cases that have become before this body in the last four to five years, where the complexes that were student-based change or lower density based on a similar scenario, is that right? And I think those were supported wholeheartedly by the city have, and have been a success. So, um, based on that, I'm in favor of granting the use variance, however, uh, I do have issue with a request, and if you could pull that up, Ms. Hayes, by the petitioner with the, um, timing with the, pulling the bu- building permit, which normally would be six months if this was approved, you would have six months to prove, pull the permit, the petitioner is asking for, based on what I understand, an open-ended timeframe to decide to pull that permit. Things can change in six months, a year, two years, and being open-ended, there is no ending on when the petitioner could do that, so I would recommend, being that we use six months, we move that to 12 months, and have our board to consider, um, that gives you 12 months to pu- doubling that to pull the permit, if you have it by that time, it would require, as always, to come back before this body. So that's the only condition I would, um, place upon the petition i- in favor of approving.
I agree with Grant affairs as well, with the stated condition of expanding it from six months to 12 months.
I agree.
Is there any further discussion? In the matter of ZBA 115 dash 22, Leah Alexander petitions for a use variance to allow cottage court duplexes on the property located at 530th Avenue East, Zoned RD2, Council District 5, with the condition of allowing a one-year period if, at approval, forward to pull the permit versus six months, voting with Mrs. Coley.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Petition was approved.
Good afternoon, Commissioner, the next case is ZBA 11822, Alyssa Leopard and Alex Fleming petition for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at 1416 30th Avenue East, this property is on R1 in Council District 5, here we have an image of the zoning, as where, well as a closer-up image of the aerial, here we have a view from the street, better image of the driveway, here are applicable regulations, this is a new short-term rental, it's a four-bedroom, three-bathroom house, the petitioner did state that only one room will be available for rent, so the remaining rooms upstairs will be locked out, uh, they are requesting four vehicles and four adults, if approved, staff recommends the one vehicle, two adults, we did not receive any public comment for this application, and the petitioner is here to speak in person.
Do you have, you guys don't have the slides anymore that show us how many short-term rentals are in the area?
So, we do, but in this instance, we didn't have one within that radius.
Hi, I'm Alyssa Leopard.
And what's your street address?
1416 30th Avenue East.
Okay, and tell us- And tell us a little bit about your intentions here on the petition.
We just want to offer a short-term rental on the weekends, just a couple nights on the weekends for game days.
Now, what seems a little unusual, and that's fine, nothing wrong with that, you're going to lock off your upstairs bedrooms? And only give the renter access to one bedroom?
Yes, and the living room and the kitchen, all the downstairs.
So one, but one bedroom?
Yes.
And you've asked for four vehicles and four adults?
I think I only need two vehicles, but the house can sleep four adults.
The concerns I have with the ask, I mean, the house obviously is large enough had you rented the entire thing. But if you go with two vehicles, the issue we have, or I have, and I'll let everyone weigh in, you have one bedroom.
Okay.
And you want four adults there.
And we have a pull-out couch as well, so that's how we would advertise it.
Have you rented before, is this your first?
I have a short-term rental in Panama City.
In Panama City?
Yes, sir.
And I'm not familiar with their regulations at all, but are you the responsible party there? Is it through an agency?
I'm the responsible party, and it's been successful for about a year now.
So do you have rules and regulations posted there?
Yes, all Airbnb rules and regulations are followed, just the typical ones.
And where will you go while, if this is approved and rented, where would you be?
Just to my parents' house downtown for game days.
Okay. And would you serve as the responsible party?
Yes, my husband.
And that's 24/7 if you're renting and something happens?
Yes.
Any other questions?
I think that rental, most short-term rentals that we've done have been bedrooms. And I understand with the let-out couch, when you do Panama City, usually in Florida, where you, all of that is counted, let-out couches and bunk beds and everything. But typically, the short-term rentals that we've seen here have been just the bedrooms. And I don't think we've had one that we've done where we used a let-out couch or a living room. So that's typically not how it's presented to us.
All right, anything else you'd like to offer?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. We don't show anyone else signed up, either for or against. At this time, would anyone like to come forward? Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Biggs, someone else is walking up right now. She's coming up-
I'm sorry, Mr. Biggs, I motioned to her, she was coming up.
Just a moment. Good afternoon.
I have a question to the young lady. She says she would have upstairs three bedrooms upstairs.
Ma'am-
Talk to us.
If you would, please speak into the mic so everyone can hear you.
I need to talk in this?
Talk to us, yes, ma'am.
Okay. She says she had three bedrooms upstairs. How is she going to keep the rental person, she's not going to be in the house? So how will she keep them from going up those steps and opening those bedrooms? Because you can take the door off your hand. I'm just saying, how are you going to keep the renter from inviting someone else to come in and spend the night? So they can get access and go up those steps and open the door, that's all I want.
Do you have any other questions for her?
And what is a short-term rental? How long is this going to be rental property?
Well, what we, if it was approved, and this is a new request, we would not allow over 30 days in a total year, in 12 months. But I'm going to give her, at the end of the audience questions, I'm going to give the petitioner a chance to give you an answer and rebut that.
Okay. Because when you start renting property in an area where you have people that are homeowners, and you know, it just makes the area, it start going downhill, you know? So we're just trying to keep as many rental properties out of claymata as we can, that's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm Clyde Biggs, I live in Fremont Drive, approximately three doors from this house. Looks like my neighborhood's turning into a rental property. I bought the house 20 years ago thinking I was going to live in a nice, quiet subdivision. And 20 years, it's changed. But it's changed because of money, and I understand the money part of it. But I'm against this, because it's just another rental. And they own the home, that's fine and dandy, but they're going to start renting it out, that's what we don't want. And maybe it'll pass, I don't think it's going to pass. I think y'all can vote it in, didn't take you long to vote it out, yeah. So just cast your ballot and let's see. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Biggs, I will say to you that when it comes to short-term rentals, them owning the home and also living in the home, that does make a big difference, because they're not going to have people rent their home and then they have to come back to it. So that's, I think that's a big factor, that they continue to own it and to reside in the home. And I think that makes a really big difference, because when they decide who they're going to rent to, they're not just going to let anybody come and stay in their home. So I think that's a big thing to consider, that they're not leaving and renting, because they could just altogether just rent it out for a whole year and not even have to tell you or go through anything. But what they're doing is picking maybe a weekend for a game weekend, or graduation weekend, or something. So they only have 30 days over the whole 365 days.
I understand. I have rental property too, so I understand how it works. But it looks like this was a quiet neighborhood, it wasn't a rental. So I think there's one house in there that rents out on a yearly basis, so it's pretty much a quiet neighborhood. All old folks retired and want to be in a quiet neighborhood. Looks like I might have to move to Crown Point, I don't know, if I get some more money. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak for or against? Ms. Leopard, would you like to come back up to the podium, please?
Can I face them?
Well, if you need to speak into the mic so we can all hear-
I just want to echo Ms. Coley, we have a newborn daughter as well. We don't want to run out to anyone where we're going to come back to our home and they would have been partying. We just want short-term and everything be good, and we're done with it. So our neighborhood does stay quiet and safe.
And specifically, and I didn't catch her last name, the first lady who spoke had a specific question, how do you intend to keep people out of your other bedrooms? Was her question.
They are locked, and we have the keys and they do not have access to them. We do have a camera up in our bedroom that will go off if someone does access that room.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, if there's no one else who'd like to speak, either for or against, we're going to close public comment and start board discussion.
So with this being the first time that they're doing short-term rental in Tuscaloosa, and with them only utilizing one bedroom in the home, I'm comfortable with two adults, one vehicle, 30 nights, and one-year probation.
I agree with Mrs. Coley, and most of us on this panel have been here the entire, close to four years, the existence of short-term rentals, so have heard majority of these unless we were absent. And anecdotally, I have talked to a lot of people in the community who have come before us. I'd run into them, or they'd reach out and ask them what their experiences. And I don't know Ms. Leopard, but from what you've described, from owners who live in the homes who rent it, they've had very good experiences, and they're very, very vigilant about watching after their home and who goes there, and how it's used and cared for, and are very scrupulous of keeping their eyes on it. So if this is approved, I hope that helps anyone that has a concern. That's what we've seen, and several of our board members have heard the same. So just thought I'd put that out there. But I am in favor of granting the petition for one probationary year, 30 nights, two vehi-, or two vehicles, and two adults in one vehicle. Two, with what Ms. Coley said.
I agree, I'm in favor as well.
Actually, I kind of would have felt better if it was the normal eight adults, two vehicles. I'm just, the image of the house seems that it'd attract more people anyway. And I just feel that limited to one vehicle and two adults can cause some sort of issue. That's my opinion, and for that, I'm not in favor.
Okay, I do think anytime density is lowered, I think it does, in this case, the petitioner is asking for less. And by asking for less, they obviously will leave money on the table. And, but not only that, there's theoretically less negative, perceived negative impact on a neighborhood if you have less people in a house. So they're asking for pretty much a bare bones to even be viable to rent. And that's why I think as a first year, they may change their minds forward, and they would have to come back before us, but I think they're asking for a very easy ask as far as, you know, for an issue for the neighborhood, forward.
I understand where you're coming from, but, okay, I see where you're coming from.
Anything else? Okay, and petition, ZBA-118-22, Alyssa Leopard and Alex Fleming petition for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at 1460 30th Avenue East, zoned RD1 in Council District 5, with the following conditions: A total of two adults, one vehicle, for 30 nights, for a total of one year probationary period, with the additional conditions that accessory structures cannot be occupied by anyone at any time, and a city of Tuscaloosa business license must be obtained before operations begin, voting with Ms. Coley.
Yes.
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 Yes. The petition was approved.
It's touchy right there, it's a bit touchy.
Next case is ZBA 119-22. Ms. Montgomery petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at 933 16th Avenue East. This property is on RD1 in Council District 5. Here we have the zoning of the property, as well as an aerial overview of the property. Here we have a view of the house from the street, including the driveway. And here are the applicable regulations. This is also a new short-term rental. The house is three-bedroom, two-bathroom, there was no violations or complaints received. The request is for six vehicles and eight to 12 adults. If approved, staff recommends three vehicles and six adults. We did receive one comment in opposition to this petition, and the petitioner is here to speak in person.
Any questions? Thank you.
Oh, I do, I'm sorry, I have a question. On the back of the, go back to the overview, it looks like it has a driveway in the back, or what's leading up to it? Or is that, what is that street, is that an alley or something?
In the rear, I believe it's a public alleyway that is not connected or directly connected to the property.
It looks like it's an unimproved alley.
Ms. Coley was referring to not the alley to the east, but to the south of the structure. Looks like a driveway, and there's two houses maybe, kind of mid-lots, like a T, right there. What is that, is that a neighboring driveway that goes all the way back?
That, to me, looks like it's just a neighboring driveway. What's in the rear is definitely an unimproved alley, but that looks like it's a neighboring driveway that doesn't connect.
Hello, I'm Plushette Montgomery, and I'm here on behalf of 933 16th Avenue East.
Okay, Ms. Montgomery, tell us a little bit about what you're planning to do.
Well, of course, I would like to be approved for short-term rentals. I do plan on renting the property out, Airbnb. And, you know, we have family members, a lot of family members that live out of town that we want to be able to let them live there as well, when they come in.
Do you currently live here?
No, sir, I don't.
You don't, okay, does anyone live here now?
It's vacant.
It's vacant?
But we do live in Tuscaloosa, just don't live at that address.
Okay. And have you ever engaged in the practice of short-term rental?
I have not, no, sir.
Okay. Where will you go when it's being rented, if it's approved?
We'll be at our home address, we stay in him place, my husband and I.
Okay. And will you, you and your husband, will you two be responsible? Okay, so if anything were to happen, they would, the renter would call you?
Yes, sir.
And have you developed rules and regulations?
Yes, sir.
For a renter, you have, and they're posted?
Yes, sir.
Now, I did notice on your request, you've got down six vehicles with eight to 12 adults.
I didn't know, I'm open though, but I wasn't aware of what the, you know, the requirements were. But that's fine, I'm definitely open to-
Because based on the parking arrangement and the size of the home, which you've stated, provided three-bedroom, two-bath, and the available parking, staff has recommended a total maximum of three vehicles and six adults.
Okay. Yep, that's fine.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. No one has signed up to speak either for or against, would anyone in the audience like to come forward? No? Okay, at this time, we'll close public comment and open board discussion.
With this being a first-time rental, I'm in favor of six adults, three vehicles, 30 nights, and one-year probation.
Yeah, I agree with Mrs. Coley. The petitioner owns the home, it's currently vacant, and resides in the community, and will be available as the emergency contact. So I am in favor of those terms.
I agree, I'm in favor as well.
I'm in favor.
Ms. Montgomery petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at 933 16th Avenue East, zoned RD1, Council District 5, voting with Mrs. Coley.
Yes.
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 The petition passed. I'm sorry, I didn't state the conditions. So reread or do you state the conditions?
Reread it.
Ms. Montgomery petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at 933 16th Avenue East, zoned RD1, Council District 5, with the following conditions: A maximum of six adults, a maximum of three vehicles parked off-street, for a total of 30 nights in one calendar year, with the addition that no accessory structure on the property can be occupied by anyone at any time, and a city of Tuscaloosa business license must be obtained before operations begin, voting with Mrs. Coley.
Yes.
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 The petition passed.
Next case is ZBA 120-22. Michael Scott petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at 18 Brookhaven Drive. This property is on RD2 in Council District 6. So here we have an aerial and the zoning of the property, as well as a closer-up image of the aerial. Here we have an active short-term rental map that shows there is one active short-term rental in the general area. And here is the view of the house from the street. Here we have an additional view, and then the view of the driveway with the two-car garage. So here are the applicable regulations. This is also a new short-term rental, this is a three-bedroom, two-bathroom house. There were no violations or complaints received. The request is for four-
The request is for four vehicles and eight adults. If approved, staff recommends three vehicles and six adults. We did receive one public comment in opposition to this petition, and the petitioner is here to speak in person. Any questions? Thank you.
Michael Scott, 1714 Harmony Lane.
Mr. Scott, if you will, tell us about what you've got planned in the petition.
Yeah, so just being able to have a short-term rental for weekends, game days, things, special events around Tuscaloosa.
Did, when you stated your address, I didn't hear that, was it this location?
We previously lived in this house for nine years. We've recently moved and kept the property for short-term rental, or rental property.
And your address you gave, I didn't hear.
1714 Harmony Lane in Tuscaloosa.
Okay, so will you be residing there if you're approved and it was rented?
Absolutely.
And will you serve as the primary contact?
Yes.
Emergency contact?
Correct.
And have you ever engaged in the practice of short-term rentals?
No, we have not.
Rules and regulations, have you looked into that, or?
Yeah, so we've looked at the normal Airbnb or the normal short-term rentals offerings, plus we've already gone through the home inspection and have all the regulations for the city already completed and inspected.
Are there any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
And, oh, one thing, sir, Mr. Scott, I'm sorry. I noticed that you have asked for, it's a three-bedroom, two-bath home. But you've asked for eight adults and four vehicles.
Yes, so we have additional space to sleep, understood from the previous comments, though, with bedrooms, that that's not usually accepted. So I accept the request or the recommendation.
Thank you. And we don't have anyone signed up to speak either for or against. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward at this time? If not, we will close public discussion and move to board comments.
With this being a first-time rental, I'm in favor of six adults, three vehicles, 30 nights, and one-year probation.
Ms. Hayes, can you pull up the street view with the garage, please? Driveway? It appears that there's room to stack two cars there. Could engineer, have you had a chance to look at that without using the garage?
There's only 37 feet between the garage to the road, so we recommend only two in the driveway and two in the garage.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I agree with Mrs. Coley on the six adults, three cars. However, I would like to put in a condition that at least, I think, engineer, you said two cars in the garage?
Yes.
Okay, to the petitioner, two cars parked in the garage, one in the driveway will be a condition. But I'm in favor of granting the remainder of what Ms. Coley stated.
I agree, I'm in favor.
There's no further discussion. In the matter of ZBA-120-22. Michael Scott petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at 18 Brookhaven Drive, Zoned R2, Council District 6, with a maximum, condition of a maximum of six adults, three vehicles, 30 nights for one probationary year. With the additional, oh, and the parking is off-street. The three vehicles, two of which will be parked in the garage, one in the driveway. And then with the remaining conditions, no accessory structures on the property can be occupied by anyone at any time, and a City of Tuscaloosa business license must be obtained before operations begin, voting with Mrs. Coley.
Yes.
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 Petition passed. Next case is ZBA-12122. Garrett Bullock petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property at 2008 14th Street East. This property is Zoned R3 in Council District 5. Here we have an image of the zoning of the property, as well as a closer-up image of the aerial overview of the property. Here again, we have an active short-term rental map of the general area. This is a view from the street. You can see the driveway directly in front of the house. Here we have the applicable regulations. This is also a new short-term rental request. The house is a three-bedroom, two-bathroom. There were no violations or complaints received for this property. The request is for two vehicles and six to eight adults. If approved, staff recommends two vehicles and four adults. We did not receive any public comment for this application, and the petitioner is here to speak in person. Thank you.
I'm Garrett Bullock, I'm here to speak on this property.
Okay, Mr. Bullock, what was your address?
13869 Glen Park Avenue, Northport. 35475.
Okay, so you, this is, home is vacant now, is that right?
Yes.
And you are the owner?
Yes.
Okay. Tell us a little bit about what you're wanting to do.
Short-term rentals.
Okay, and have you ever engaged in the practice of short-term rental?
No, sir.
And you mentioned you live in Northport. Would you, are you going to be the emergency contact?
Yes, my wife and I.
So while it's being rented, that you will stay and reside in the city in your home, or in Northport?
Correct.
Okay. And I don't know if I asked rules and regulations, have y'all put those together yet?
Yes, and we plan on abiding by all rules and regulations. By the city and Airbnb.
Okay. All right. Now, you did ask on the screen in front of you for two vehicles and from six to eight adults.
Yes, I was, when I put the application, I understand it's usually two people per bedroom. And like someone said earlier, I had also like a fold-out couch and things of that nature.
Well, what we, a part of what drives it in that last bullet point is the off-street parking. And it looks like your parking pad will accommodate two vehicles.
Correct.
So, up there. And then if you could go, jump back to that last page, please. No, I'm sorry, back to where you were with the... Right there, thank you. City staff recommends two vehicles and four adults. It's true, you have, based on what you're stating, three bedrooms, but what's been found, more people end up coming. Oftentimes, people travel as couples, and we look at parking as part of that formula on the house. So that's going to limit you to, based on what city's, city staff recommends, is two vehicles and four adults.
So are you?
Because you can't park another vehicle legally on the street, well, by using it as a short-term rental use. It's not allowed, even if it's legal street parking.
So just, can you, can you actually... So four adults, children don't count? That's, that's what I was trying to get at, maybe.
Yeah, adults.
Okay. I see what you're saying, okay.
But the parking is very, very important.
Yes.
To minimize issues in neighborhoods, even though you may be able to have done more in a family setting, with parking on a legal street, it is not allowed under that use.
Absolutely, and we plan on abiding by that.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Bullock?
I got one question, can you flip back to the house, the aerial view of the house? At the back of it, is that little piece in the back, is it connected to the house, or is that another structure?
It's another structure, it's actually a storage slash laundry room.
But nobody can go in that, or?
No, it's, it's going to be locked the entire time.
Okay, all right.
It's not connected, conditioned to the house?
No, sir.
Okay, so it's treated as an accessory structure, which, under the conditions, would not be allowed to be occupied or used.
I just couldn't tell if it was connected or not, so, okay.
No more? Thank you, appreciate it. We do have one additional name, I'm sorry, I can't read, read the writing, please come forward. And just state your name and address, please.
Ann Preston Bullock, representing on behalf of 2008 14th Street East. I'm Garrett Spouse, in complete agreement with whatever you all decide. Our biggest thing, we want to be able to afford people opportunities to come to Tuscaloosa. We moved here almost five years ago, fantastic city, it's provided us many opportunities. So we want people to come to the city, we want revenue to come to the city, so whatever you all decide is fine with us. We do have three bedrooms, we accommodated one bedroom for twin-sized beds. We're hoping that we can cater to more families that come into, come into town. But if approved, we will abide by anything that the city affords us to do.
Thank you. And we've got one more signature I'm having, struggling with. Is there anyone else who signed up? Or is interested if you'd fail to sign up to come forward and speak? No, okay. In that case, we'll close public comment and move to board comments.
Okay, with this being a new short-term rental, and based on the parking that's available, two cars fitting in the driveway, I'm comfortable with four adults, two vehicles, 30 nights, and one-year probation.
I agree with Mrs. Coley.
I agree as well.
In the matter of ZBA-121-22. Garrett Bullock petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at 2008 14th Street East, Zoned R3, Council District 5. With the conditions, there will be a maximum of four adults, two vehicles parked off-street, maximum of 30 nights in one year, probationary year. With the additional conditions to be, no accessory structure on the property can be occupied by anyone at any time, and a City of Tuscaloosa business license must be obtained before operations begin, voting with Mrs. Coley.
Yes.
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 Petition passed. Next case is ZBA-12222. Garrett Bullock petitions for a special exception to allow for the short-term rental of a property at 79 Cedar Knoll. This property is Zoned R2 in Council District 6. So here we have the zoning of the property, as well as an aerial overview of the property. Here again, we have a map showing another short-term rental in the area. Here's a view of the house from the street, and a closer-up image of that driveway. Here are the applicable regulations. This is also a new short-term rental. The house is two-bedroom, one bathroom. There were no violations or complaints received for this property. The request is for two vehicles and four to five adults. If approved, staff recommends two vehicles and four adults. We did receive four public comment in opposition to this application, and the petitioner is here to speak in person. Any questions? Thank you.
Garrett Bullock, 13869 Glen Park Avenue.
Mr. Bullock, do you own this property at Cedar Knoll?
Yes.
Explain to us your plan here.
Same thing, short-term rentals, just want to afford up people opportunity.
Okay, is this, this property is currently vacant, is that right?
Yes.
And you plan on leaving it vacant if you engage in short-term rental?
Yes.
And then, like the previous case, are, will you be the responsible party?
Correct.
Okay, rules and regulations, and you follow the same format?
Absolutely.
All right. Again, looking at what you've asked for, I guess similar to the last case. Based on the parking situation, in essence, a single-lane drive, that would be the maximum we'd allow of stacked parking. So, you know, to, city staff has recommended two vehicles, and then form, kind of with the formula, be four adults maximum.
Okay, I agree.
Any other questions? Thank you. We don't show anyone currently signed up, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to come forward now? Speak for or against? No, in that case, we are closing public comment and opening board discussion.
Okay, with this being a new short-term rental, I'm comfortable with four adults, two vehicles, off-street parking, 30 nights, and one-year probation.
Yeah, similar to the last case, very similar, same petitioner. He was going to plan on conducting himself in the same manner with the other one. Again, I agree with Mrs. Coley in the one-year probationary limit.
I agree, I'm in favor.
I agree as well.
No other comments, then we'll move to a vote. In the matter of ZBA-122-22. Garrett Bullock petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at 79 Cedar Knoll, Zoned R2, Council District 6, with the following conditions. Maximum of four adults, maximum of two vehicles parked off-street, a maximum of 30 nights in a one-year, treated as a probationary year. With the additional conditions, accessory structures cannot be occupied by anyone at any time, and a City of Tuscaloosa business license must be obtained before operations begin, voting with Mrs. Coley.
Yes.
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 Petition passed. The next two cases will be presented together, so this is for ZBA-123 and ZBA-124. Vicky Grodner petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property at 2222 for a select drive. This is for Unit A and Unit B. This property is Zoned R1 in Council District 2. So here we have the zoning of the property, as well as an aerial overview of the property. Here's that map of the active short-term rentals in this area. And here we have a view from the street for, for one side of the structure. And then here is that other side, so as you know, there's two separate driveways, one for each unit. Here are the applicable regulations. The request is a new short-term rental. Each unit is two bedrooms, one bathroom. There were no violations or complaints received for this property. The request per unit is for two vehicles and four adults. If approved, staff recommends the two vehicles and four adults per unit. We did not receive any public comment for this application, and the petitioner is here to speak in person. Could you go back to the street view? Okay, that, the first one you went to, that one. The, the house to the right, the White House, is that a shared drive? Yes. So they're, they would be asking for this unit to park to the left side of where that blue vehicle is. Correct. All right, thank you.
Good evening, I'm Vicky Grodner, I live at 721 Queen City Avenue. I am a Realtor here in Tuscaloosa with Keller Williams, and am the owner of HNG Property Rentals. I am petitioning on behalf of my clients Deeann and Michael Lack, who have purchased this duplex for their, for their own use when they're in town to visit their students, and then when they're not going to be in town, would like to offer it as a short-term rental.
So Mrs. Grodner, it's the common owners and two units when they purchased it.
Correct.
And their intentions are to, as short-term rental, both sides.
Correct.
And then they would occasionally use one of the two or both when they're in town and it's not being rented.
Correct, with themselves and family members.
And we're familiar with, you've come before us and represented clients. You're obviously familiar with the process.
Yes, sir.
Just to remind us, in your rental group, whom is the responsible person for emergencies?
So I, I'm, at the end of the day, the responsible person. I have two other staff members that work with me, and so when a phone call comes in, it rings all three of our phones, but I'm the one that, that handles any issues if there are any, and we rarely have any, so.
So your staff's all local?
Yeah, absolutely.
Contacts, okay.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, absolutely.
And my question earlier, I think staff answered it, the driveway to the right facing the front is a shared drive with the White House?
That is correct.
So they've got two parks there, and then your intentions on a separate rental for the other half would be the other driveway?
Yes, sir, that's correct. Yes, sir, that's correct.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
We did not have anyone signed up to speak for or against. Is anyone in the audience interested in coming forward at this time? No? Okay, we will close public comment and open board discussion.
So with this being a new short term rental, I'm okay on Unit A with the four adults, two vehicles, thirty nights in one year. I have issue with the B, the shared driveway. I really, I know you can have technically two cars, but with it being shared with somebody who lives in the other, I just think that that could be room for some issues there, and I'm, I would be more inclined for two adults and one car on that side, just because of how the parking is tight already. Looks like somebody might, if it's a big truck, it could take over that drive, so I just would be more comfortable with that, since this is the first year, and if there are no incidents, then coming back at renewal, potentially doing the four and two.
I know in the past with shared drives, we have approved them. And I know one in particular, a block on Ninth, on Ninth, just off of Queen City. That particular one is very, very tight. It's a single lane, half, quarter drive, so a vehicle can park, and then it goes around to the back, and I know the one on the back, we've approved several times, they've got a three year approval. Engineering, could you weigh in on that picture for the one Ms. Coley's concerned about in B? As far as the, the depth, width and depth of the drive?
I do not have the width and depth.
Do not have that?
I don't have that noted right now.
Could you show us an aerial, please? We don't have any things back there, okay? That's a different car, it looks like.
Now, it looks bigger from the aerial view of it, but looking at it straight on, that car being there, it looks like they have to have room to get to their stairs, and that if you put something else there, anything bigger, it could cause some, some friction. And that's just what I'm seeing now.
I know Mr. Gardner in your office, who's not here tonight, he was in the comments meeting, and he weighed in there, four and two.
Okay.
Based on that, and again, I don't have measurements, but based on that aerial, just opinion, it looks like you could do two and two.
It does appear.
Just, and based on what we've done before in the area. I know one in particular, I see every day. Just not mine, so. But, that's all I have, but other than that, I'm in, in agreement with what's presented by staff recommendation.
I agree, I'm in favor with staff recommendations as well.
I'm in favor as well.
No other comments, we'll move to vote. In the petition of ZBA-124-22, Vicki Grodner petitions for a special exception to allow the short term rental of a property located at 2222 Forest Lake Drive, Unit A, zoned R1, Council District 2. And the following conditions, if approved, a total, following conditions, four adults, two vehicles maximum parked off street, a total of thirty nights for a one year probationary period. And no accessory structure on the property can be occupied by anyone at any time, and a City of Tuscaloosa business license must be obtained before operations begin, voting with Mrs. Coley.
Yes.
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 Petition approved for Unit A. Unit B is vote for ZBA-123. Sorry. ZBA-124-22, Vicki Grodner petitions for a special exception to allow the short term rental of a property located at 2222 Forest Lake Drive, Unit B, zoned R1, Council District 2, with a maximum of four adults, two vehicles parked off street, for a total of thirty nights in a one probationary year, with the following conditions, accessory structures cannot be occupied by anyone at any time, and a City of Tuscaloosa business license must be obtained before operations begin, voting with Mrs. Coley.
Yes.
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 Petition was approved.
Next case is ZBA-125-22, Mary Anna Ezel petitions for a special exception for a short term rental located at 3218 Veterans Memorial Parkway. This is for Unit 3306, this is on R4 in Council District 5. So here we have the zoning of the property, as well as a closer up aerial image of the property. Here again is that active short term rental map, there is an active short term rental in this apartment complex. Here is a view from the parking lot of the apartment complex. Again, the applicable regulations. This is for a new short term rental, the apartment is two bedroom, two bathroom. There are no violations or complaints received. The request is for two vehicles and four adults. If, if approved, staff recommends two vehicles and four adults. To my knowledge, we did not receive any public comment for this application, and the petitioner is here to speak in person.
Thank you.
I'm Mary Anna Ezel, I live at 995 York Shaw Street, Tuscaloosa, Alabama, 35406. I'm a retired Tuscaloosa City School teacher, and I purchased this condo in hopes of short term rentals to assist with my monthly income. And I, it is, I have it in the hands of Kim Roberts as of this afternoon. I signed a contract with her as management with Bama Bed and Breakfast.
Okay, Mrs. Ezel, we're familiar with Ms. Roberts, and, but have you ever, I know you're, you're, signed a contract, she will manage the property. Have you ever ventured into short term rentals before?
I have, I own a condo at Perdido Key, Florida, however, and I am head of the rental committee there, but it is, all the rentals go through our HOA.
Okay.
But I have worked with that.
Okay, and Ms. Roberts in this case will be your representative.
Yes.
And she has been before this board more than anybody. So I, I do understand from experience, you know, her, how she's handled her properties that she represents. And you having, it's comforting, you also have some exposure with a rental property.
Yes.
So, okay. Are there any other questions for the petitioner? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And we do not have anyone signed up to speak for or against, and I've heard no opposition written or by email. So, at this time, does anyone else in the audience care to speak for or against? No, so we will close.
Are the parking spaces assigned at the condo, at this particular condo?
There are two spark, two parks, I believe, that staff can help.
So, we have been told that there are two parking spaces designated to each, and the three other short term rentals that have come before the board the past few months have all been two vehicles granted to them.
I didn't know, I remember which one of these condos it was, something, okay, so, two, okay.
We're going to close public comment and open board discussion.
This is a new short term rental, I'm comfortable with four adults, two vehicles, thirty nights, and one year probationary period.
I agree with Mrs. Coley's comments, and Mrs. Roberts will be the designated, contracted realty contact, and she has probably more properties than anyone in the city, so we've, we are familiar with her, so I have confidence that that will be managed.
I agree, I'm in favor as well.
I agree.
Okay, in the matter of ZBA-125-22, Mary Anna Ezel petitions for a special exception to allow the short term rental of a property located at 3218 Veterans Memorial Parkway, Unit 3306, zoned R4, Council District 5, with a maximum of four adults, two vehicles, a total of thirty nights in the first probationary year, with the additional conditions that no accessory structures will be occupied by anyone at any time, and a City of Tuscaloosa business license must be obtained before operations begin, voting with Mrs. Coley.
Yes.
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 The petition passed.
Next case is ZBA-126-22, Leslie Leopard petitions for a special exception, allow for a short term rental at the property in historic district. This is at 1427 Deering Place. This, this property is on R3H in Council District 4. So here we have the zoning of the property, as well as an aerial overview of the property. Here you can see there are several short term rental, active short term rentals in this general area. Here's a view of the house from the street. The parking is actually in the rear of the property, so here you can see the park, or the driveway, and then here we have a closer up image of that driveway. These are the applicable regulations. This is a new short term rental request, the house is four bedroom, three and a half bathroom. There are no violations found or complaints received. The request is for three vehicles and six adults. If approved, staff recommends the three vehicles and six adults. We did receive some public comment in opposition to this case, and the petitioner is here to speak in person.
Any additional questions? Thank you.
Leslie Leopard, I live at 1427 Deering Place.
Ms. Leopard, could you tell us if you've ever had any experience with short term rentals prior to this application?
I have not done short term rentals in Tuscaloosa.
So you have?
I have done short term rental in Birmingham.
Okay, how was your experience there?
It was fine, I did it through Airbnb.
Okay, and was it your home there?
It is.
Okay, and you, did you live in that, home there at the time?
Yes.
Okay, so again, you've got familiarity with it and Airbnb, so have you prepared your rules and regulations?
Correct.
Okay, and where will you go while it's being rented, if it's approved?
I will go to 1603 Deering Place, which we also own, so you can see the house.
Okay, so you'll be close enough to walk over?
Yep.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, as staff mentioned, there were some written comments, we've all read, from neighbors or close, close neighbors. No one has signed up to speak either for or against. Is there anyone now who'd like to come forward and speak? Okay, being with no one from the audience coming forward, we'll close public comment and open board discussion.
With the petitioner's previous experience with Airbnb in Birmingham and short term rental, and then being close proximity to the house when it is in, being short term rented out, I, I have no problem with approving six adults, three vehicles, off street parking, thirty nights, and one year probation.
I agree with all of Mrs. Coley's comments, and I would like to ask staff, did this location under a prior owner was approved by this board for the same ask?
It was approved last year in October, I believe, for three vehicles and six adults.
Okay, and it's a different owner, so I know that's no reflection, but just curious, were there any issues there before, documented? Okay, good, thank you. Yeah, I'm in favor of granting the petition as it's requested.
I'm in favor.
I'm in favor as well.
In the matter of ZBA-126-22, Leslie Leopard petitions for a special exception to allow, to allow the short term rental of a property in historic district located at 1427 Deering Place, zoned R3H, Council District 4, with the following conditions, a maximum of six adults, a maximum of three vehicles parked off street, a maximum of thirty nights in a one year probationary period, with the file, additional conditions that no accessory structure will be occupied by anyone at any time, and a City of Tuscaloosa business license must be obtained before operations begin, voting with Mrs. Coley.
Yes.
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 The petition passed.
Next case is ZBA-127-22, Michael Herring petitions for a use variance to renew the short term rental of a dwelling that is not legally able to be occupied, located at 1902 Hackberry Lane. This property is on BGO in Council District 2. So here we have the zoning of the property, as well as that aerial of the property. Here's another active short term rental map that shows short term rentals in the general area. Here's a view of the structure at the property. This is showing the drive back to the parking lot. Here are the applicable regulations. So this request is for a renewal of a short term rental. The house is three bedroom, one bathroom, there was no violations or complaints received. The previous approval was for three vehicles, six adults, thirty nights per year, for one year. The current request is for three vehicles, six adults, forty-five nights per year for three years. If approved, staff does recommend three vehicles and six adults. We did not receive any public comment for this application, and the petitioner is here to speak in person.
Thank you.
Good evening, I live at 7845 Bellevue Circle in Tuscaloosa, Alabama, 35406. This property is located at 1902 Hackberry Lane.
Mr. Herring, you're coming back for a renewal.
Yes, sir, I am.
Tell us a little bit about the first year.
Very happy with the first year. I wasn't using the property, so to get to use it has been a financial benefit, but it's also been, I think, good for this area. As you can see, it's well kept, and we had a really good experience, and I've had nothing but good experiences from the other people that have left the reviews on it and everything else, so I'm very happy with it.
And you mentioned you live in, in town, it's your primary residence.
I do.
Will, will you serve, continue to serve as the primary contact?
Yes, I've owned this property for fifteen years and have no intention of selling. I will be the main contact, and am, my number's posted inside the residence with the rules and everything else.
Are there any other questions?
How many nights did you rent it out last?
Exactly thirty. That's why I needed to get in here.
Well, if nothing else, thank you.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate it.
We don't have anyone currently signed up to speak for or against. Does anyone in the audience would like to come forward at this time? Okay, we will close public comment and move towards board discussion.
With this being a renewal, this is what we like to see, no issues, no problems with the short term rental. I'm in favor of six adults, three vehicles, extending to forty-five nights in three years for the renewal.
Mr. Herring, no, you're good, I'm just making a statement. Mr. Herring, based on his comments, maximize the license the first time. Could you go back to an aerial? This is a little different ask than the special exception because of the zoning, and you're not allowed by zoning to live in this commercial classification. But the pictures, and I don't know if you have the pictures, Ms. Hayes, we saw earlier of the interior. But it's a, it's a house, in essence, and, and totally designed as a house. It just happens to be in that commercial area, and it has age on it where things changed and redeveloped through that, on that corridor, on Hackberry. But there's ample parking, and then based on what we've seen initially when this came to us, it's just a little bit different ask for everyone's benefit from a special exception to a use variance. But as you can see by the photos, it's laid out as a functioning residence. So based on that, and the comments from the petitioner, we had maximized the usage and had no issues, I'm in favor of granting the renewal.
I agree, I'm in favor as well.
I'm in favor as well.
In the matter of ZBA-127-22, Michael Herring petitions for a use variance to renew the short term rental of a dwelling that is not legally able to be the short-term rental of a dwelling that is not legally able to be occupied, located at 1902 Hackberry Lane, zoned BGO, Council District Two, with the following conditions: a maximum of forty-five, excuse me, a maximum of six adults, three vehicles parked off-street, for a maximum of forty-five nights for a three-year period, with the additional conditions that no accessory structure will be occupied by anyone at any time, and a city of Tuscaloosa business license must be obtained before operations begin, voting with Mrs. Coley.
Yes.
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 The petition was approved.
Okay, moving out of short-term rentals and into our other cases. ZBA 128-22, Phoenix House Partners in Recovery petitions for a special exception to allow a group home on the property located at 826 35th Avenue, zoned R3, Council District One. Here's an aerial view of that property, as well as the zoning, and then a closer aerial view of that property. Some views from the street. Applicable regulations, Section 2491, specifically Article 7, which says daycare center, night care facility, group daycare home, or kindergarten, and the primary and discretionary criteria for that, for a primary, just safe, convenient driveways shall be provided. Y'all saw that driveway in the previous picture. The petitioner is requesting a special exception to allow a group home. The petitioner states it will be a, quote, "supervised residential recovery house," end quote. The request is to allow for up to six adults to occupy the dwelling at a time. There are several other existing facilities in this area. The petitioner states they're approximately 150 feet from this property, and the Phoenix House's main facility is just north of this property, approximately .1 miles. Partners in Recovery is a separate entity that works with Phoenix House to provide housing opportunities through their various residential properties. Y'all have any questions for staff? We didn't receive any public comment on this.
Good evening. I'm Jim Standridge. I'm the lawyer for the Phoenix House. This property became available recently, and retired Judge England was attorney representing the family, and he offered the property to the Phoenix House, which we were interested in because there's obviously a demand for substance use recovery housing. We have, the Phoenix House has a number of other houses in the neighborhood, as well as our main facility. So if we can make it work with six residents, we'd be interested in purchasing the property. It's a spacious home that would lend itself, I don't know the exact square footage, probably 3,000 square feet, that would lend itself easily to the, to the six residents. You may be curious about the vehicles. Most of our residents do not have vehicles. It's occasionally a resident has a vehicle, but most of our residents, the residents that would be targeted with this structure will normally don't have residence, but I think there's two or three places there anyway. As you may know, retired Sheriff Sutcliffe is now the director of the Phoenix House. Phoenix House has a fifty-year history in this community of providing safe and secure housing for people with substance use disorders, so we would ask the board to consider allowing this special exception.
If you could, Mr. Standridge, how, kind of walk me through the actual, I get it, big picture, but this is a residence for the six individuals in the program.
Yes.
And so they'll, they'll live there. Are there any parameters on them needing, or they have to go out and obtain employment during the day?
Absolutely, absolutely. They will all be employed, unless they're disabled.
Right. And then, so, in the mothership of the Phoenix House, that's where the resources would come in.
Yes. We have a very similar operation now with, with a so-called three-quarter house.
Right.
That transitions from, excuse me, from the Phoenix House out to a, to a less intense treatment and more employability and schooling. We're doing a workforce program, so.
What step is this? Is this the last step?
It would be, yes, sir.
And again, the six individuals staying there, they won't need 24-hour supervision?
No, sir. The others in the three-quarter house are not 24-hour supervised, but they are subject to screening, supervision, and reasonably strict regulations, obviously.
Okay. And then you mentioned y'all were looking to purchase, so I'm assuming the contingency is upon approval from this body to move forward?
Yes, sir. And Judge, Judge, retired Judge England's here to address any of those concerns, as well as retired Sheriff Sutcliffe. Everybody's retired at me.
Somebody's got to work. But, no, I appreciate that. Are any other questions?
How many bedrooms are in the house?
Sir?
How many bedrooms?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
How many bedrooms?
At least five or six. There's, upstairs is a large room that would make, probably three bedrooms. I think it's sectioned off into five bedrooms, yes. But one of them is like a double, like upstairs den that could be easily made into two bedrooms. Yes, sir. It's a, it's a large home. It's larger than it looks in the picture.
And what is, I know this is that hopefully last step to getting out, back into the community, independent?
Yes, sir.
Is there a time limit on how long someone would stay in this transition?
Three to nine months.
Okay. And then by then, they would need to move?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And there, if you also notice, there's also a substantial structure that goes to the upstairs of this home, because it had been, I think, maybe an apartment or something at one time, so it has good access and good fire safety for the upstairs.
Okay, good. Any other questions? Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
We don't show anyone signed up to speak for or against, and we received no comment, emailed or mailed. Oh, sir. Yeah, please come forward, yes.
My name is Clarence Hurst, and I live in this area, this community here.
Could you give me your last name one more time?
Hurst, H-U-R-S-T.
Okay, thank you.
Clarence Hurst, and I live in this community, and what we're trying to do is to get a little more information about, see, we weren't notified about this. The only reason we found out about this was, it was in the box in front of the property. So I'm thinking that someone, they sold the house, and they're trying to sell the house, and this was a piece of paper that, by the owner, they found out that they wanted to request for a Phoenix House there, and I think that's, you know, in the community, it's not a good idea. But we do have small childrens in that era, and it's, and we're trying to build a community and that, because I, I, I don't think it's a good idea. It was some questions that we were concerned about, especially with our children. How many, I think you addressed that question about how many would be living in that, was concerned about that, and there is lots of concern. And we, like I said, we were trying to build a community and not add to a problem, which could be a problem, because it could, I don't know the condition of these, maybe recovering. Personally, I have nothing against that, but it's not a good, a place to raise children in, in that environment, for a group home. And maybe it's out in a public place, but not in a neighborhood where we're trying to establish the growth and have some personality added to, you know. But that's, I was asked if it's possible that we can table this request to about two weeks till we get with the neighborhood. Like I said, we weren't really notified personally. I called today, a number here that, they had a meeting at three o'clock today, concerning, you know, your comments, but we weren't notified about that meeting. Only thing, we knew about five o'clock this afternoon.
Well, I'm going to let, ask Ms. Hayes to explain how, the notification you received in your mailbox, and how that goes out to the public, if you will, Ms. Hayes.
So, two weeks prior to the meeting date, we send out notifications to neighbors within a specific radius. Now with these, and it being a special exception, it's 300-foot. So with this one, it's the adjacent neighbors, because it's a special exception for something with short-term rentals, it's a larger radius. And so we send those out two weeks prior. Now, as for the meeting, earlier today, there isn't a meeting. There's just the one at five o'clock, so I'm not sure about the meeting that was on there at three.
I had called this number here, and they told me, it was, it was, they're submitting comments in three o'clock.
Oh, to submit written comments. So with that, that's the deadline, to send in an email for written comments, just talk about tonight at the meeting.
Okay. But we would like to request that we can table it to about two weeks until we, in the neighborhood, come together and see exactly what our concerns are, that we address this issue.
When you're finished, I'm not rushing you, though, Mr. Hurst, but when you're finished with your comments, I might allow anyone else to speak, and then I'm going to ask the petitioner or their representative to come forward, and hopefully they might be able to rebut or answer something else for you. But we just, we'll keep our comments just from the, from you or anyone else, just to us, and then they can, they've heard what you've had to say, and they might want to make a response.
Sure.
Okay?
Mr. Tarrant, I do want to make a correction. It's a 500-foot radius on those.
Yeah, that was a 500-foot radius from this property that's being petitioned, mailed out within a 500-foot radius to all the homeowners within 500 feet. Yeah, I don't know what you received, you didn't, I just know that's the protocol they, they use. Is there anyone else who would like, in the audience, who'd like to speak for or against? If I could, can I have the petitioner or their representative come forward? Oh, absolutely, yeah.
My name is England, John England. I represent the owners, and it's, it really was a combination of the owners all being elderly, and there's mortgage, and so they decided that the best thing for the family would be to sell. Y'all probably familiar with things that we call sell-for divisions. Well, then it, you look down and you know and see the Phoenix House, which has been a good neighbor for 50 years, and what appeared to be a combination, because it's a residence that, that's had, that's fairly large, and has been there for a while. So that combination is what really led the, the owners, with my help, to at least approach the Phoenix House, to see if they would be interested in it, given the mission of the Phoenix House, and the proximity to it, the proximity of friendship right there in the area, and their being good neighbors, was really how this came together. And I certainly understand the, the residents' concerns, but all they have to do is consider the history and the service that the Phoenix House has brought, not only to that community, but to the whole community. I'll be glad to respond to any, any, any questions you have, but that's really all that I could add to the discussion.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to come forward and speak, either for or against? Mr. Hurst? Yes, sir. Come on, come on back up.
That area, I've been living in, in my residence for about thirty years plus, and I've seen some of the traffic that goes to the Phoenix House, and they, sometimes these guys be late for meetings and stuff, and they, it's rare, the way they drive, it's real justy. So I don't see why they defeated how it really contributed anything to the neighborhood or the growth of the other neighborhood. Anything, it's more addition to trouble. That's what, like I say, because when I live on the corner house there, and when they come in, going to the Phoenix House, and they driving extremely fast, and like I said, we have kids in the neighborhood.
So you're concerned, from what I'm hearing, is speeding or traffic with folks you see coming and going from there?
Mr. Hurst, have you made any complaints, or called 311, or made any type of complaints about the speeding?
I never, never, never.
Have you ever contacted the Phoenix House and made comments about the speeding?
I didn't, I did not. I had intention to, but this is, this had really brought it to surface, you know.
What may be a good idea, if everyone's agreeable after this meeting, after we vote, there's some gentlemen here who represent the Phoenix House, and I think they would be glad to entertain any concerns you have and address those accordingly. I think what might be good, y'all can do that outside immediately following this vote.
So it's not possible that we could table this for a couple of weeks?
Well, we're, we're going to consider the vote. We're going to have a board discussion, and then we'll, we'll move forward from there.
Appreciate you, thank you.
I appreciate your time. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak either for or against, or comment? Okay. That's no, so we're going to close public comment and move to board discussion.
City, can you run the, the number of places that are owned by the Phoenix House that are currently in the area? You stated that there, the Phoenix House is .1 mile from this home, and then that there's another house that is owned in the area already? Can you come to the mic, please?
We'll agree to open back up to get this answered.
In this particular area that we're talking about, the new home, these other houses are in this area already?
Yes, ma'am. They're just a half a block away.
Okay, that's five houses and a church.
Six and a church and a big building that the, the main Phoenix House is in.
So, okay. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you so much.
And the Partners in Recovery for Clarity is a sister, 501C3, to the Phoenix House that actually runs the three-quarter houses, and will likely run this one too.
Thank you.
So with that information being stated, that there are already five, or six houses, a church, and the Phoenix House already in this area, and the Phoenix House has been operating for 50 years, I see no reason not to approve an additional home that will be a dwelling for six more adults in the area. I do see the good that the Phoenix House has done in the community, and I think that it offers an opportunity for recovery, which is much needed, and with it already being in the community so heavily, I don't see it adding any more detriment or anything like that to the community. So I'm in favor of granting the special petition, petition to allow the group home.
Yep. I agree with Mrs. Coley's comments. The Phoenix House is a proven concept. You know, unfortunately, addiction plagues our city and every town and burg around this country and planet. And because they've got, to Mrs. Coley's point, an existing backbone network there that has a faith-based component, the main structure, the levels of care to get individuals back on their feet and back being productive, law-buying, tax-paying citizens, I think the mission is there. I see the gentlemen in the audience who have had public service, who are affiliated with this, still being engaged with the public, and I trust that they will continue to maintain a very viable, ethically-run program. And I have a feeling, to Mr. Hurst, who spoke earlier, and a conversation after this vote, however it goes, I think will be listened to, and I think they will take action if you have complaints as a neighbor, being a good neighbor. All that being said, I'm in favor of granting the petition. All that being said, I'm in favor of granting the petition.
I'm on the fence with my decision. On one hand, I see the concerns of the neighbors. If it was my neighborhood, I wouldn't. I understand the Phoenix House has been there for fifty-plus years, um, but just because there's already three, four, or five already in my neighborhood, that doesn't mean that I'd be okay with six, seven, eight, nine, or ten in my neighborhood. On the other hand, um, with it being so many in that neighborhood, if it had been an issue for the neighborhood, there had been complaints about the Phoenix House or some of the individuals, uh, in some of those previous houses, they would've given me something else to go on as to say, okay, well, maybe we shouldn't add more to it. A- as of right now, I really, I really don't know, um, which way I'm, I'm gonna vote on, but I, I do see both sides of it, and again, if it was my community or my neighborhood, I wouldn't say, okay, since we have five, let's just add another since they're already here.
I would have to agree with Mr. Rollins on that statement he made. However, um, being that there weren't, weren't any prior, um, complaints or anything about that about the Phoenix House, it's kinda hard to make a solid decision, but, um, yeah, I'll just leave it at that. But...
I would ask that, um, Mr. Sexton, if you wouldn't mind coming, can we open back up and hear from him a couple of comments as the leader of the Phoenix House?
Our discretion to open it back up, yes.
If you don't mind coming forth and speaking about it, um...
Good evening.
Good evening. Have there been any complaints or problems or issues with the Phoenix House in the area in the community?
I have been the executive director for approximately one and a half years. If I may, I think I can answer some of the questions the gentleman has raised. The city went through the notification process, including a pretty good-sized sign in the front yard that, that advised of this hearing and the information that was placed there. Uh, Phoenix House has been in this location since nineteen ninety-two. We've served over ten thousand people in the fifty-year history of the Phoenix House. The number of residents, uh, uh, at the Phoenix House, uh, is generally about thirty-five across the street in the area where we have these six homes. One of them is, uh, has been demoed and is going to be, uh, recon- redone by Habitat for Humanity. We spend a good bit of time on, uh, community outreach in the area. Uh, I am not aware of any violent crimes or any serious crimes that have taken care of, uh, at the Phoenix House. We've had one resident, uh, in my year and a half that has, uh, has managed to have the police come and arrest him, uh, and he did not stay as a resident, uh, but about five minutes after he left. Uh, so we are very, very, uh, we have strenuous rules, both at the Phoenix House and strenuous rules at the Partners in Recovery, in which these persons are, are, are continuing, uh, their, their recovery. I notice here where he talks about traffic, a majority of the folks at the Phoenix House do not have cars. A majority of the folks at, uh, Partners in Recovery do not have cars. The Phoenix House, uh, just got a fifty-thousand-dollar grant from the city, uh, to be able to continue our work program. And as part of that is that the Phoenix House takes a majority, a vast majority, probably eighty percent of those that live in the Phoenix House and in Partners Recovery, we take them to work and we pick them up from work. So, uh, the, uh, uh, as a matter of fact, Thirty-Fifth Avenue is one way going south, uh, to facilitate, uh, I'm sorry, is one way going north to facilitate, uh, uh, the Friendship Baptist Church. So we have a one-way on one side, uh, and then, uh, most of the police activity that I have seen in the area has not been associated, as a matter of fact, all of the police activity, with the exception of one, has not been associated with the Phoenix House. And I, I keep up with Chief Sebo Sanders and, and talk to him and make sure that, uh, that what we're doing is apropos. We keep up with, uh, various folks in courts. We work very closely with a number of different partners to ensure that, uh, that we are adhering to the various rules and regulations that are required.
The supervisors, I know we mentioned there'd be six residents, but it's two supervisors. Are they there around the clock? Do they work a shift?
I'm sorry, I did not understand.
The, the two supervisors that are gonna be there?
Is it supervised?
Yes. Are they there twenty-four hours, or do they just work an eight-hour shift and?
Phoenix House, Phoenix House is a, uh, is a twelve-week program. In order to be able to go to Partners in Recovery, you have to show that, uh, that, that you are excelling in your recovery. Not everybody that comes out of the Phoenix House goes to Partners in Recovery. Tonight, there's only twelve in Partners in Recovery, but they had to go through and successfully complete the twelve-week program. They have to show that they're making progress, that they truly are involved in their recovery. Uh, they have to be recommended by their case manager. Uh, they also have to have the approval of the business manager, and they also have to have approval of the executive director, myself, in order to go to Partners in Recovery. It is not a program you just apply and go to. If you do not qualify, you don't go.
Are there any background checks? 'Cause there were concerns about, um, the children in the community. Are there background checks done on the people that are placed in, um...
We have no violent offenders, we have no sex offenders. Uh, they do not qualify to come to the Phoenix House. Uh, if, uh, uh, we had one that showed up on our doorstep that we found out about, and he was immediately removed. Uh, but, uh, as a general rule, uh, in the assessment process and, and the information that we get, if we see anything in their background of a violent crime or of, of a sex offender, they do not come to the Phoenix House. Any other questions? For Partners in Recovery? No other questions? Anything else you'd like to add? I think we're good on questions at this point. I'm sorry. We're, I think we're good on any additional questions unless you had something else to offer. No, that's it for me.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess come to the podium. Just all comments need to be made at the microphone.
I have to ask Mr. Waller a question. The, the staff at the Phoenix, we have round-the-clock staff at the Phoenix House all the time.
Okay, we opened the can of worms, we opened it back up, so I will give, Mr. Hurst, come forward, I'll let you make a comment, and we'll close it out.
I heard they cry, I understand, but I would like to a- address a question. Would they, in their community, would they accept a Phoenix House, a group home in their community? See, you gotta be careful, uh, when you addressing, uh, issues when they don't contain you. Like the Phoenix House, they do have home houses, but they're on the other side of the block, and they, they, they're, they are not no angels themselves, 'cause I, I live in that community for years, and I see some of the reaction that come in from the houses that, that they live there. Then also, uh, you have, uh, guys coming from the Phoenix House in a group. I guess they'd be going to grocery store somewhere, and they just, they come all across your property and, it, kinda, they don't, you know, it's, it's not a good idea. I'm, I'm telling you, it's not a good idea. I know, I, I can...
I appreciate that, Mr. Hurst, and what will, after the vote, outside, I think would be appropriate time for, as you heard from the executive director and everyone else engaged? They, I'm sure wanna be good neighbors that they already are, and, and try harder, so I think that would be a good discussion to have with them.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, this is it after you.
If, if I may to get on the record?
Yes, sir.
To be put on the record, should anybody have a, a problem with any individual at the Phoenix House, uh, if they'll call me at the Phoenix House or my cellphone, which is two oh five, four five four, eight seven six two, uh, we would welcome that input. Uh, I think that, uh, you will find, uh, that we have folks in the neighborhood that have made calls to us to, to ask for various things or help or whatever, and we are, are very, very involved in our community directly around us.
Well, I, I appreciate that, and like I said, I think after this would be a good opportunity to speak with Mr. Hurst. Thank you. Okay. We are closing public comment, and we will start back with board comments or any, any other reflection.
Again, I'm in favor of the Phoenix House and the Partners in Recovery purchasing the home and giving them, granting them the special exception. Like I said, six homes, a church, and the Phoenix House, they're already there. I think that if there were issues, they should've been addressed, you know, three, four houses ago, and when the Phoenix House arrived in ninety-two. I feel like a lot of effort is being made to handle this in the correct and proper manner. I think if you reach out to them with any issues or problems, they will be more than happy to work with you and to address those issues. So thank you to everyone that came and spoke about it. And I do understand what's being said, would you want that in your community or at it? But once again, it's already in the community, and I think that they've shown to be good neighbors in wanting to, you know, promote the community and help out. And like you said, if anybody's come to them, they've partnered and worked with them.
Yeah, I echo Mrs. Coley's comments. You know, I think it's, the program's there, I think it's based on the comments of the executive director. It is very strict, and it is not harem, scare him on who gets in there, who stays there, and ultimately, who gets to graduate and hopefully go on and be productive as well, I think we all want. And just one, one anecdote, I've got no affiliation with the Phoenix House whatsoever. When my son was seventeen and finishing high school, he was working construction part-time. His job at the end of the day was to take a resident of the Phoenix House home, and he would drive him home, and got to know this, I won't mention the individual's name, and I did meet him, good guy, and, um, turned himself, turned his life around, and had a rough go of it. So I know on the driving piece that was stated, there aren't many cars. I know that to be true, and I know this gentleman turned his life around after that, so, for what it's worth, but, um, I, I'm in favor of passing it.
Um, after opening and back up to additional comments, I was able to receive some of the, um, answers to my concerns. I would suggest to the individuals in the community, remember, uh, Sheriff Sexton's number. I, I just put it in my phone once, once he put it on public record. Um, if you have any concerns, reach out to him. At this time, I'm in favor of it. But again, if there's any issues that you have with any of the individuals, reach out to them. I'm not a city councilman, but I know most of these individuals. If you have issues, reach out to me, and I'll reach out to Sheriff, Sheriff Ted Sexton. But at this time, I'm in favor of it.
I'm having, I'm, I agree, I agree.
No other board comment, and we'll move to vote. Uh, petition, uh, ZBA petition one twenty-eight dash twenty-two, uh, Phoenix House, Partners in Recovery petitions for a special exception to allow a group home on the property located at eight twenty-six Thirty-Fifth Avenue, zoned R three, Council District One, voting with Mrs. Coley.
Yes.
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 The petition's approved.
Okay. Uh, moving on to ZBA one twenty-nine twenty-two, Scott Russell petitions for a variance from the residential setback regulations to allow the construction of an accessory structure on the property located at eight twenty Queen City Avenue, zoned R three H, Council District Four. Here's an aerial view of that property as well as the zoning, and then a closer aerial view of that property. View from the front. You can kinda see that structure right here. The applicable regulation, section twenty-four ninety-one, location of accessory structures on residential lots, states that no accessory structure shall be less than five feet from any lot line. Petitioner is requesting a variance from the setback regulations to construct a sixteen-and-a-half by sixteen-and-a-half accessory structure, which will be used as an art studio. Per the petitioner, the current shed, which is located in the northwestern corner of the property, has existed for approximately a hundred years and is in disrepair, so it needs to be demolished. However, the current shed is non-conforming, as it sits closer than five feet to both the side and rear property lines. According to the petitioner, if the proposed structure is required to meet the setbacks, it will virtually eliminate the existing backyard. This project will require approval from the Historic Preservation Commission, and they will go to that meeting on November ninth. So here is a proposed site plan. This is where the art studio, it's almost the exact same footprint as the existing structure. Do y'all have any questions for staff? We received one letter in support of this petition.
Okay, Mr. Russell will come forward.
Hi, I'm Scott Russell, um, thirteen oh five, Twin Oaks Road East in Northport. I'm here on behalf of the Hamners.
Okay, um, it's explained on the graphic, it's an art studio, will be used as an art studio?
Yes.
What are the rough dimensions?
It's roughly sixteen-and-a-half, sixteen-and-a-half, right? Yes, sir.
And outside of an art studio, do they plan to put anything in there to be for any other type of use?
No.
Okay, so as far as an assess, a true livable structure would not be allowed?
Right.
Okay. Uh, Mrs. Ford, who's not here tonight, wanted to make sure I asked that. So she's a stickler for that, but, uh, so just the art studios, the use?
That's great. The homeowner currently has an art studio within the house, which is a living room or a den or a parlor, for lack of a better term, and they wanna raise this, we looked at it as trying to historically redo it, but it's sinking into the earth, and also we figured this, you know, meeting was appropriate first.
And I'm sure the HPC will address to the building materials and things of that nature?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I don't have any more questions, do you? Anyone else? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I, I don't, do not show anybody signed up to speak either for or against, and we have read the letter of support from the neighbor. Is there anyone else in the audience at this time who'd like to come forward to speak for or against? That is no, so we will close public comment and move to board discussion.
I'm in favor of granting the variance from the residential setback reg- regulations to allow the construction, since there's already, uh, a, 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 a structure that's there in disarray. I think this would be an improvement to the property, and I'm sure the Historical Society will address everything else that would need to be addressed, so I'm in favor of the setback.
Yep, I agree with, uh, Mrs. Coley. Like many properties that are of historic nature, built in downtown, well predate as the existing zoning, nineteen seventy-two zoning. Based on that, they won't fit in any of the, um, this is zoned, or R three H, or any residential designation, typically speaking on setbacks around the house based on the lot size, uh, 'cause zoning didn't exist when these were planted. So that being said, in multiple, um, historic, pre-zoning dated structures, we run into this. It could be a garage or a structure that's typically real, rebuilt to the footprint. So based on that, I see that as the hardship, they could not conform with current zoning. Um, so based on that, I'm in favor of granting it.
I'm in favor.
Okay. Um, in the matter of ZBA dash one twenty-nine dash twenty-two, Scott Russell petitions for variance from the residential setback regulations to allow the construction of an accessory structure on the property located at eight twenty Queen City Avenue, zoned R three H, Droid, Council District Four, uh, voting with Mrs. Coley.
Yes.
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 The petition passed.
Okay, moving on to ZBA one thirty twenty-two, B D LLC, David Fields petitions for a use variance to occupy a dwelling that is not legally able to be occupied, located at twenty-three oh four Fourteenth Street, zoned BGO, DROD, Council District Four. Here's an aerial view of that property as well as the zoning, and a closer aerial view of that property. Here's an aerial view of that property as well as the zoning, and a closer aerial view of that property. View from the street. These next pictures are from the petitioner. Showing that the interior of the property is set up as a residential structure. The applicable regulation, section 2452, permitted uses, single-family resident is not a permitted use in BGO, nor is it a special exception. Petitioner is requesting a use variance to occupy a dwelling that is not legally able to be occupied. The home was constructed prior to receiving its commercial zoning. Per the petitioner, for approximately 30 years, it has been used as a daycare. Thus, the property lost its non-conforming status to be occupied as a dwelling. Petitioner does state that they attempted for more than 10 years to pull in a commercial tenant, but they were unable to do so due to the residential features, layout, and overall design of the structure. The house has four bedrooms and four and a half bathrooms, a laundry room, kitchen, living room, and a game room. The structures on either side of this property were originally built as single-family dwellings and are also currently zoned BGO, and they are being used as single-family dwellings. Do you all have any questions for staff?
Do you know when the house was built?
1920. As you heard, the petitioner is here.
Thank you.
Nick Crane, 6063 Talbotan Avenue, I'm representing Bead LLC.
Okay, and your last name again?
Crane, C-R-A-N-E.
Tell us a little bit, if you have anything to add to?
I think Emily covered it all. We're just wanting to use the structure as it was intended and originally built. I mean, it's, you can see from the pictures, it's a residential dwelling through and through. So that's what we're requesting.
And like the neighboring homes that are currently similar zoning, however their use has been residential, but flanking on both sides?
Yes.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Thank you.
Thank you. And I signed the sheet accidentally, so I apologize for the confusion.
Okay, we do not have anyone signed up. Last chance, is there anyone who'd like to speak for or against? Okay, we'll close public discussion and open board comments.
With the age of the home and its previous use, and then with the two homes on the other, on either side of it, being used a single family, I do see the approving of the use variance and allowing the existing building to be used as a home. It's been beautifully redone. So I'm in favor of the use variance. With the rules and regulations from so long ago, I'm pretty sure there's no way to kind of do anything with this property without the use variance.
Yeah, I agree with Mrs. Coley. Similar, not exactly the same, but similar to the previous petition. Again, a home that was built, not in a historic district, but same age roughly as that previous home, very close. Zoning did not exist in the original city plating at all, and of course setbacks and all the regulations we go through did not exist. So based on that alone, and also we've seen a big change from the downtown commercial area moving out to 15th Street, where you're seeing a lot of reuse of all sorts, some to residential, some to commercial, which is a good thing, that area is growing well. Great to keep these older structures intact. So I think, you know, it's, it is what it is, it's a house. So based on that, I'm in favor of granting the use variance.
I agree, I'm in favor as well.
I'm in favor.
In ZBA-130-22, Bead LLC, David Fields petitions for a use variance to allow an existing building to be occupied as a single-family dwelling on a property located at 2304 14th Street, zoned BGO, DROD, Council District 4, voting with Mrs. Coley.
Yes.
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 The petition passed.
Okay, moving on to our last case of the night, ZBA 131-22, Barbara Pate petitions for a special exception to allow tent sheltered sales on the property located at 1302 The Towns, zoned BNS, Council District 3. Here's an aerial view of that property as well as the zoning, and then a closer aerial view of that property, it's a large vacant lot. Here's a view of that lot. So the applicable regulation, section 2491, special exception, specifically 41 vehicle mounted or tent sheltered sales. With this, it does state that the tent and all signage used in connection with the operation shall meet the setback size and location standards, which apply to permanent commercial structures. Discretionary criteria, just essentially saying that the tent cannot exceed 50 square feet in area, and it is an excess. It cannot exceed 45 days in any calendar year. Petitioner is requesting a special exception to allow tent sheltered retail sales for more than 10 consecutive days. Petitioner plans to operate from November 21st through December 24th. The event will be called Happy Holidays Christmas Tree Lot, and Christmas trees and wreaths will be available for sale. Petitioner also states that they will have Santa Paws there doing family photos and pet photos four times during the month. Petitioner is currently operating on the weekends under a special event permit from the planning office. So we did get some comments about that, and they do currently have that approval. It's just because they are setting up and taking down every single weekend versus this. That's going to be operating from November 21st through December 24th without it being removed each weekend.
So that's the only difference?
That's the only difference.
Can you go back to the picture street view? Which doesn't have the tent there?
Right.
And where on this will it go, do you know, or do I need to ask the petitioner?
I'll let the petitioner speak to it when they get up here.
Okay. Any other question for Mrs. Hayes, Ms. Hayes? Thank you.
We had one written comment in opposition.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dr. Barbara Pate, and I'm the owner of the property. And the tent is going to be, you will see there's a little, right there, a little prime, excuse me, temporary power pole there. It will be in that general area, so it'll be set back off the road, and then we have all the off, the on-street parking there. Because as there is no building, it is Christmas tree, so Christmas trees have to be kept outside instead of indoors, and there isn't a building. And our primary reason we're doing this is to introduce ourselves to the community, so people can come and ask us questions about the Paw Pet Resort that is being built next year. So this is a way for them to come and speak to us. And at this time, I'm going to let my COO, David Cordell, come up and speak for a few minutes, if you don't mind?
Just one question, you mentioned the street, on-street parking, which I'm familiar with, that there. Where have you engaged with the church? Because I know they have a large lot to the left of this frame, or the commercial business to the right frame of the frontage. As far as, do you anticipate you need additional parking?
Well, there's a driveway there that you can't see, you can see a black pole here, there's a driveway there. They could actually pull up and park right there on property. So any of the property could have been used for parking. We have almost four acres, so they could park anywhere on that property. We assume that most people are going to pull up, go and look for their tree, take some pictures. We'll load the tree on their car or deliver their tree to their home, and then they'll go, they'll drive away. I haven't spoken to Rebecca at Heritage House, and we can use her parking. I have not approached the church, but I'm willing to go and approach them if we needed additional parking.
Okay. All right, thank you.
My name is David Cordell, and I am a University of Alabama graduate and have made Tuscaloosa my home for the last 18 years. I am currently the chief of operations for the Paw Pet Resort coming in the fall of next year. Touching base on the parking situation too, we will also not be open during typical church hours. We will set up basically on Sundays in the afternoons anyways, and so we shouldn't have any competing for the parking spots in that area. I'm clearly in favor, as this event bears the mark of our mission statement even before we open our doors next year. Our mission can be read in its entirety at pawpetresort.com, but the entire purpose of our event is to slowly ease tensions and better inform the surrounding community. And we want to equip ourselves with the ability to work in unison with our wonderful neighbors as opposed to against them, right? So we've taken steps to assure that we are not scheduling similar events that are already planned nearby. Our purpose that when we do open our doors next year will be to have a seamless, synergetic, and positive relationship with our city and surrounding neighborhoods. This is the relationship we would like to start sooner than later, which is the reason why we are requesting this. The proposed event next month will help us become more than just a pet resort, but also an asset to the community. I just want to assure both the city and the surrounding neighbor, surrounding neighbors, that we plan to stay dedicated to bringing value to the area, and we are proud to be in Tuscaloosa and are elated to be part of such a fast-growing and wonderful place to live. Thank you guys for your consideration. Any questions?
Yeah, the parcel that's highlighted in red on the screen?
Yes, sir.
That's all under the current ownership?
Yes, sir.
Of Pate?
Yes.
Or the business?
Yes, sir.
And then the parcel to the right of this or east that's in a black outline, is that also owned or not?
That is being built on by someone else right now, but we do not own it.
That's separate?
Separate.
That is separate, yes.
So your permanent structure would go inside this parcel?
Yes, sir.
And the use on the back end of your dates, I think you had the 24th of December? That's your ceasing business under the tent?
Oh, yeah. And it could very well possibly be the 23rd or 22nd kind of thing, when we run out of Christmas trees.
Is it your intention prior to construction, if everything moves forward in planning and permitting for the new building, the permanent structure? Are you planning to do something like this?
We want to have a very much be a part of the community and do the Paw Patch, the pumpkin patch that we're doing, that we just finished, and stuff like Holidays of Tuscaloosa to not just, like I said, we don't want to just be a pet resort in town. We want to be part of the community. It's a very important thing to us, to be a part of the community. And so we're showing that we can help out with not just sales, but, for example, we plan on answering back letters to Santa that kids, children are going to come put in our mailboxes, right? So that's just some small example of the tiny things that we want to do to be part of the community and not be against it, right? We're not here just to make money off our neighbors, we're here to be a value and an asset and enrich the neighborhood, right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we actually, the last case, everyone signed up for.
Thank you for your patience.
That's her. McCrery. Looks like Mr. McCrery, have I pronounced it that?
Good evening.
Good evening. If you could just state your name and address, please?
John McChesney, 1906 Point Clear Road, Tuscaloosa, Alabama.
Okay. What did you want to comment on this evening?
Well, again, just the comments that have been made by my wife and our operations manager. We moved to the community about 18 months ago. And basically, we have four dogs at home, we're very friendly with pets, and we noticed that there was a need in our immediate area for a more extensive pet facility. So basically, we bought the land and are now finalizing the plans to develop an upscale pet resort for the community. And that's our intention.
And I had looked, your COO referenced the website, but is this a boarding facility, a day facility, or both?
No, it's, it's an indoor-outdoor, so it'll have daycare, overnight, training, you know, there'd be an indoor pool. There'd be no cages at all, all be suites, some of them with access to outside areas. So it'll be a very upscale pet facility. In fact, I would be glad to live there.
There you go.
Sounds nice.
Okay. Did we have any questions?
Good. Thanks very much.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gilpin?
Yeah, good evening, Joe Gilpin, 5337 Park Avenue in The Towns. Also a property owner across the street. My wife and I have a rental property immediately across the street from Heritage House, right there. And I was going to talk about the, my concerns just about the ingress and egress, the fact that we have 400 lots in The Towns that all have to kind of funnel right through this choke point at the beginning of the neighborhood. I think it's interesting that none of the other accesses to our neighborhood ever have been able to go through and offer that. There's been some moments where we've had this area blocked off by a fire response or something, and nobody can get in and out. So I have concerns about that use here. Heritage House, there was mention about using the parking there. There's a current construction site in between the two with a silt fence up. You can't walk between that parking lot and this site, so that's, that's an issue. The, it's a big connection that's just been made between what is to come and what this is. My comments were mainly about the Christmas tree farm and, you know, 50 by, what is it, 50 foot, 50 square foot tent. This is obviously going to be a lot bigger than that. We've been looking at a pile of hay bales and other things for the last month in this location, which hasn't been particularly attractive to the neighborhood. This area is, was called the Town Center part of our community. And I don't think that any of the founders of the neighborhood had envisioned kind of a pop-up shop of wares in the front of our neighborhood like this. And so would like that to be considered. I don't know how compatible that is with our HOA or covenants, but I suspect that there might be some inconsistencies in there as well. With regard to the future look, future use of this as a, you know, they're calling it a pet spa. It really, to be honest, is going to be a kennel. It's going to be a high-end kennel, but there will be a lot of outdoor barking dogs at the front of our neighborhood. I'm not excited about that as a homeowner. I know a lot of other homeowners are equally not excited about this. I know that this development has not received approval, is that correct? Not? And that's all for a different, a different day, a different meeting? So I mean, I think we need to focus just on, on is this an appropriate exception to, to the zoning for this particular lot at this time? We'll be back again for the next session, so thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Turner, Holly Turner?
Hi, Holly Turner, I live at 5337 Park Avenue in The Towns. Also, we currently have two brick and mortar stores that sell Christmas trees. Treehouse Nursery on Watermelon Roads, about two and a half miles away. And then North River Lawn Company, that's just a few hundred yards down the road. You can actually see that business from where they're going to set up the Christmas tree farm. So I personally don't see a need to have a Christmas tree sales tent there with regard to what's happening in the community and outreach. As a member of the HOA there and a resident, we have not received anything personally or through the community from the owners of this land about reaching out to the community. It's truly like a flea market when you go by. I mean, I hate to say it that way, but there's a tent, they're out there, there's people just milling around. And when they have been told to take down the, you know, their pop-up shop during the week, it's a trailer, which was actually in that photo, it's a trailer with pumpkins in it, and then hay bales stacked in front. You know, we had the reins, everything sagging, the corn stalks they had are all over the ground. It looked absolutely awful. And I have talked to our HOA board, we got a letter from the board of directors, which I know you're not allowed to be involved in HOA stuff, but they said they're exploring their options with regard to this property sale because the owner of the development sold it to these folks without consulting or letting anyone in The Towns know that that was happening, even though they are part of our HOA and this is part of our HOA. They're a lot, and so they're exploring options right now as to what to do with that because the builder sold it, and then the builder just walked away from the entire development and said, I'm done with the development now. So there's definitely conflict within the neighborhood. The outreach, I have not seen any outreach yet, so I'm just, again, I was just going to talk about the temporary variant permit for the tent sales and how it wasn't, in my opinion, needed for the area. There's not an urgent need or any sort of immediate need for that. But when we're talking about the pet resort and all of that also that came up and the communication within the neighborhood. But when we're talking about the pet resort and all of that also that came up and the communication within the neighborhood, I haven't seen any of that, and I don't really understand how that's part of our community or going, you know, I don't understand why, how those two things make sense to have a Christmas tree stand and then bring us from the neighborhood out into that Christmas tree stand and be, I'm sorry, I'm really nervous.
That's okay.
So I'm going to stop talking, but that's my concerns. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, that's everyone on the list. Is there anyone else? Please come forward.
My name is Patty Bonner, and I live at 5396 Anna Lane, live in the towns. I'm here concerned about this temporary facility going up in our neighborhood. And like the other people who have spoken, I'll leave a pet boarding place to another time and a discussion. Our neighborhood has lots of children, lots of bicyclers, lots of walkers. Heritage House is at the front of our neighborhood as is a church. Those, the Heritage House, people are walking from our neighborhood constantly going to the Heritage House for breakfast and things like that. What happens when this pop-up shop is there, for lack of a better term, is there is absolutely no place for a car to park. So they pull over to the side of the road. So there's construction traffic. There's traffic from Heritage House, people walking to and from. It's dangerous. They're going to ask cars with one little tiny bit of road access to pull up on the side, and they're going to load and unload Christmas trees on the side of the road with people going up and down, cars going up and down. You can, you have to pull over and watch for children everywhere in our neighborhood. It's going to create a dangerous situation. Number two, just like the last lady who spoke, there are two facilities within a half a mile radius of where we are that already sell Christmas trees, that already sell pumpkins, that already do all those things. There are two businesses that, of people who actually live in the towns, who provide pictures with Santa Claus, pictures, answering letters to Santa. Those services are already provided in our neighborhood by people who live in the neighborhood and own businesses in this community. And the dangers of what they are presenting, the traffic and the loading and the unloading is just a dangerous thing for our community that I don't think anyone in our neighborhood is excited about seeing. So I would appreciate y'all considering the community and the dangers to the pedestrians and the children before you make a decision on this, the variance for this property.
From, I just have a question for you.
Oh, yeah.
From a safety issue, I think I heard you correctly. You mentioned increased traffic, and then you mentioned the offloading or loading of a Christmas tree when that occurs. How does that even make traffic worse perhaps?
Right.
Is that fair?
Yes, that is fair.
And then your other comment, and I think one of the speakers before you also had was an issue about the service that was being offered there.
Yes, yes. It is, it's a duplication of a service that we already have within our area that's already established in our neighborhood. This is, this is more like a craft fair. It would be like setting up Kentuck Craft Fair at the front of our neighborhood.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak? Yes, sir.
I'm William D. Suddeth, and I live at 1909 Point Clear Road. And I'm the next-door neighbor to the Pates and McChesney. And my wife and I have lived at 1909 Point Clear Road since 1994. Since our next-door neighbors have moved in, they have created community on Point Clear Road. They are very, very geared to children and to pets. They are, they have created for so many of the people on our street a community that never existed previously. I have had more interaction with the people on Point Clear Road in the last year than I have since 1994, and it's all because of the family that lives next door. As far as what they plan on the entrance to the towns during Christmas and Halloween, the traffic through there is enormous. And the traffic is well-received. Everyone in the towns decorates and participates in the celebration of Christmas and Halloween. As far as I know, I haven't heard of any major complications from those events. And as far as the way the business that the McChesney-Pate combination are planning, it will be done with the utmost of care and with as much respect for the people that live in that area. And I'm in no way have any objection to that. And I completely agree with them.
Okay, so Mr. Suddeth, the traffic you mentioned associated with holidays, I believe it was Halloween and Christmas, that was, was that already there based on the decorations and people coming in?
Yes.
To do that or engage in trick-or-treating or what have you?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha. Okay. All right. Any questions for Mr. Suddeth? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else who hasn't spoken yet who'd like to come forward? No? I will give, which is out of what we do in practice, the petitioner. You've heard whomever wants to represent the petitioner to come forward. You've heard several issues from neighbors of, and owners in the town. So if you'd like to come forward now, you have an opportunity to address those.
As far as she's saying, traffic and danger, there's no danger we're going to put any child or any resident in with our tents. As I said, they will not be loading or unloading Christmas trees on the road at all. People will be pulling up into the little driveway that's there, onto the property, away from the cars, away from any child that could be walking by, or away from any person walking by. So they will not be put in any danger by loading a Christmas tree onto a car.
And that would occur, on the drawing you're looking at, the Landscape Oval, just past that is the road curve?
Yes.
That is your egress, the curb cut?
Yes.
Into your property. Okay, so you're, what you're stating, if you're allowed to sell Christmas trees, whomever is loading a tree, receiving a tree, will pull onto your property there?
Yes. They will pull into there, back in. We will load them up. We're also going to offer delivery. We've had a lot of requests from the Pumpkin Patch, which, we had a lot of requests and people coming from the Pumpkin Patch, from the towns, who were very happy and very excited that we were there. They're very excited. I did ask several homeowners about the townies' Facebook page, so we could get on there and start letting people know what's going on, that they could ask us questions. And we were told, no, we are not a homeowner, that we are not welcome to join their Facebook page. So I'm not sure. We are going to start doing mailings. We've had a lot of people who don't have pets come to the Pumpkin Patch to ask us questions about the resort because they're hearing a lot of misinformation that is being given out that's inaccurate from people who don't actually know what we're building and making assumptions that we're going to have lots of dogs outside, cages outside. That is not our facility at all. So there's a lot of misconceptions out there. By doing these events, it's allowing people to come and speak to us and ask us, so we can answer these questions. If I sat in that parking lot and on that property in a chair for every day, no one's going to walk up to me and say, what are you doing? What are you building here? But if we give them an opportunity, a reason to welcome them onto the property to come and say, hey, what are you doing? And we call it the Paw Patch and the Santa Paws, so that you know that it's us who's coming onto the property, which gives them a welcome reason to come out and talk to us. And we've had lots and lots and lots of residents come out and speak to us. A couple were against us when they walked up, and once they spoke to us, they walked out and wrote a very nice letter and put it on their Facebook page about us. So that's the main reason we're doing this. I'm not making profits off these Christmas trees or pumpkins. I'm doing it as a service to give people the opportunity to feel welcome to come and talk to us. So that's why I'm doing it.
Okay. Any questions?
Ms. Pate, where do you live in relation to the towns?
Uh, like, basically across, like, if you go to the street, like, one street over, there's, like, Leslie Place. We're the next street. So we are right there, too. We just don't live in the towns.
Across Rice Mine?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And one other que, whatever comment while you're here, the brick-and-mortar structure is not a conversation we're having tonight, obviously.
No.
It's not in our purview now. And I would just make a suggestion. You've heard from some neighbors and the homeowners in the towns. It would probably be a reasonable idea to engage in some way, shape, or form, whatever you choose to do, with them to, if there are concerns, at least to have that discussion.
Okay.
Perhaps.
Um, also, at the Pumpkin Patch, we gave out flyers with our Facebook and Instagram and email accounts. And so every person that walked up, we gave a flyer. And we said, if you have any questions, comments, concerns, please don't hesitate to email us. Let us know. So we did give it out to people who did approach us at the Pumpkin Patch. There's no soliciting in the neighborhood, so I couldn't go put a flyer in the mailbox. I would have to mail a flyer for information. But we are out there. We've had our Facebook page. We have an Instagram account. We have a website. If you go on there, you can send us, there's an email address attached to it that'll go right to us. We answer any questions and comments. I've gotten several from over there, and we respond right away. They've been favorable. We've had one that wasn't. And again, once we communicated with her and told her what we're planning, she was on board with it. So there are ways to come and ask us. We have not been invited by the HOA to come. And if they have meetings, we haven't been invited by them to come to an HOA meeting or anything. We would be happy to, but at this point, we haven't.
And you have closed on the property, correct?
Yes, we have.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, you're part of the rebuttal team, so yes, that's, we're going to draw it at that, though.
I just wanted to state for the record that info@pawpetresort.com is the direct email to us on our website. That's, that goes straight to either Barbara or myself to talk and ask any questions, voice any concerns, and we will directly email you back with an answer promptly.
It's on the record.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Does the board have anything else? All right, at this point, we are closing public comment and moving to board discussion, starting with Mrs. Cole.
Chair, I'm going to defer to you to start the comments on this one.
Okay.
I'm a little, I don't understand this one as much.
Well, the, let me ask staff a few questions to clarify some things. The permit is solely for the tent permit, for the special exception to allow the tent sheltered sales. That is for the time period that we've discussed only, correct?
Correct. Just for that time.
December 24th comes and goes, this is done.
I would suggest probably putting a condition on, if it is approved, putting that condition on there that it's just for that timeframe.
So that, that covers that as far as the tenure of this, if it's approved. Okay, thank you.
If they wanted to just put the trees, like, if they didn't want to put a tent up, but they just wanted to put tree, Christmas trees and just sell Christmas trees, could they do that without any?
They would still need, so in any other situation, this would be exactly like how they were with the pumpkins, where it was a special event permit, but because it's more than 10 consecutive days, we kind of have to put it under this tent of the tent sheltered sales. So that's fine.
And I know the current zoning classification, which was part of the plating, I believe, I wasn't on the board when the town was developed, but that was the planning that the city agreed to. And B and S, Business Neighborhood, what's S?
It's special.
Special.
Specialized.
So it's got some parameters on the types of use that go in under a commercial. Okay. All right, that clarified that for me. In listening, the petitioner has purchased the property legally. They have the property. It has a zoning. They have a plan. That'll come later. What we're looking at is specifically for operating or allowing them a special exception if approved to allow the tent sheltered sales, which has been described. Several neighbors, homeowners in the towns have spoken in opposition. Their concerns, I think universally, if I'm not reading into this, were safety concerns that could affect foot traffic and increased car traffic specific to this use. Or, and there were some other comments, I believe, when the pumpkin sales lained, they weren't happy with the look of what was left out there. Maybe wet hay bales, a trailer, et cetera. That sounds to be going away seasonally, I'm assuming. There were concerns about parking and loading of trees. The home, the business owner, petitioner addressed that with their egress onto their property for that. There were also comments concerning the use, that there may be similar commercial sales points in the area. That, that is something, we don't control a market of there's 10 Christmas tree sales or one. We live in a free-market economy. This, that's not in the city's purview, nor is in ours to say, who can sell trees? You know, we're capitalist. And based on that, you know, I can't see that weighing any, any way on this. This isn't an unsavory item. A Christmas tree, I think, in the spirit of the neighborhood and most neighborhoods, Halloween decorations, pumpkins, all those things we do, you know, in group holiday settings, I don't think that's a detriment in my mind to the neighborhood. I do agree with concerns about traffic. I think I asked an initial question about parking. Perhaps being a neighbor, and you may be a future long-term brick-and-mortar neighbor, if that works, that you might engage with the church perhaps, or another commercial neighbor, the other neighbor perhaps, for some parking if that becomes an issue, and then in turn educate your customer base about that with signage and being very proactive. The homeowners association was mentioned, a former developer. As you heard from my opening comments, if you were here, we as a board and the city of Tuscaloosa do not recognize and/or enforce HOA agreements or anything of that nature. That is a civil contract, a civil matter, which I think one of the speakers referenced. That would be something you pursue totally on your own, outside of this realm completely. We don't, we don't acknowledge those. So all that being said, I'm in favor of granting it with conditions. Those conditions would be forward, the dates capping on the 24th of December. It, then it's over. That use is over. To do anything of this nature again, you would have to come back before this body and along with whomever is aggrieved by it, and we see how this experience works. It doesn't seem it's going to be that long in length. And based on that, I feel there's some confidence and some protections for those to see how it works. And that'll help in your comments moving forward on whatever issue that may be. But based on that, I don't see this as being any egregious safety issue if, as long as people aren't illegally parked and, you know, speeding applies to everyone, so I hope. And hopefully through here, it's, you know, kids drive fast, a lot of people drive fast, but I don't see that being an overwhelming, alarming safety issue. So based on that, I'm in favor of approving the petition with conditions.
Um, after your comments and talking with the city about it, my only concern, I see the concern about the busyness and the congestion right in this area. So I do recommend that you make some type of arrangement with the church so that overflow parking can be there. And I think if you have that set up where people know to go in and park there, walk across, deal with it, and then if they're going to buy something, come in. Because I do see that concern. It, I know the towns, and there's, it's a walking community, family, very family-oriented. So I can see if there's traffic going to the her, it just can get congested there. So I would like to see that kind of be dealt with. I don't think, you know, I would think a lot of people would. I don't think, you know, I, I would think a lot of people would come and participate and want to, you know, engage with buying the trees and so forth. But I do think that it should be put up in a nice manner, because I wouldn't like that if the sagging, because it's right in the front of the neighborhood and those houses, you know, they're not cheap, so I would like to keep the community, so please be mindful of that, how you put up and how you wrap up for the night. Other than that, I, you know, I see no reason not to approve.
Two things I want to mention briefly. Early on, I can't remember who on the list referenced the egress to the neighborhood. There's one entrance to the neighborhood, and Mr. Gilpin, and that is something, of course, we have no bearing over. That comes back to the development and what was approved and not approved and what wasn't gone on any other phase, so that unfortunately, I, we can't help that unless there's some other development opportunity on y'all's behalf. But the other item is to the petitioner, you have heard very loud and clear, I think this is a good opportunity to make some inroads for what it's worth. I would be very transparent, I would be very accommodating with information and, and be a true good neighbor as, as one of your current neighbors describe you to be. So that's all I've got.
I'm in favor.
I'm in favor, as well. Are we saying the 24th is the timeline?
Oh, yes, that's the cutoff.
Okay.
And staff, can you go back to those dates, please? Yeah, second bullet point. Okay, that would be a range of the tent allowed from the 21st, which is what, prior to Thanksgiving, and through the 24th. I think that's good on board comments, and we will move to vote. ZBA-131-22 Barbara Pate petitions for a special exception to allow tent sheltered sales on the property located at 1302 The Towns, Zone BNS, Council District 3, with the condition that the tent, if approved, would only be allowed, or the tents, the sales under the tent be allowed from November 21st to begin through December 24th, 2022, when it would need to be removed on the 24th. Voting with Mrs. Coley.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
It is approved with conditions.
Okay, so we're done.
No, we're not done.
Oh. We should have did that in the beginning. So we're going to go back to discussing the proposed rules.
Could you let everyone know what? This is just business for the board, yeah.
So we'll discuss voting on the proposed updates to the rules of procedure. So just as a refresher, highlights of the proposed updates, clarification that approvals are based on documents reviewed by the board, updating terminology to match current City Hall Department organization and existing language, clarification of newspaper printing requirements, Tuscaloosa County, clarification of special exception and use variance expirations, updating terminology for when special exception uses and use variances run with the land versus the petitioner. So for the updates to rule number one states, the approvals by the board of a variance or special exception are based upon the information in the petition, representations of the petitioner to the board supporting documents to the petition, including maps, drawings, scaled site plans, and/or building elevations, conditions placed upon the board's approval, the zoning code of the city of Tuscaloosa, and all other applicable laws, regulations, and codes. To the extent petitioner's subsequent use of the property, which is subject of the petition, materially varies from any of the foregoing, the approval of the board is no longer valid. So moving into rule 15, expiration of special exceptions or variances. Y'all want me to read through all of these like that?
Michelle and Linda were on the subcommittee or to look through this, and then we had just gave that back to staff, so that's entirely up to y'all. We've seen it.
Come on, okay, perfect.
The, not on the dates, I think we do need to talk about the last item.
Talk about the what?
The last item, the use variance.
Yes, so we'll go through just again. Now with this, this is rule 16, this is the thing that we were kind of talking about a little bit in our comments meeting with the chair. With this, what was originally being proposed over the last few months that has been uploaded on the website has been that this is going to run with use variances and special exceptions. After discussion, the chair, and you can speak to it a little bit more if you'd like to, I think there's just a little more comfort in leaving it with just special exceptions for now, that these use variances aren't running with the land, because the hardship in each situation is different per petitioner.
Yeah, I think you could get a, use a use variance, and I could sell the business or change hands. They could come in for the same use. In the past, they've always had to come back for a barber shop or whatever it may be, if, if it's a use variance. And they could come in and change the parking scheme if they added two chairs, which we were, were very particular about how many people are doing what. And I think that is unique to the individual operating. So at least that way, for whatever near term we can see, that could be reviewed.
Right.
That's a thought we have for sure.
So that was it for that. Do y'all have any more questions about the rules? Okay, so I think with this, we have to make a motion to adopt these.
Motion.
Okay.
We need a motion, so move.
All those in favor of updating the rules and regulations for the zoning board of adjustment based on what staff has presented, starting with Ms. Coley?
Yes.
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 It's approved.
Good deal. So just one thing I wanted to briefly mention to y'all. So last week at Admin and Council, there was a mention of a short-term rental moratorium that is going to be discussed again tomorrow, so that is something that could directly affect this board. So tomorrow at Admin and Policy, I believe, is when it's going to be presented again. Be sure to tune into that.
But question, and I'm familiar with what was presented last week. If it goes through Admin, Policy, they vote to bring it up to Council, will it go tomorrow night for a vote, or is there a process of length of weeks?
It should go tomorrow night for a vote.
So if it goes to the full council based on the recommendation, they will vote tomorrow night and the moratorium would be in effect immediately?
I don't want to speak to that just yet. We will definitely update the board on what exactly happens.
And the reason I ask, because I know if it, the moratorium doesn't go into effect in the right time, when the folks who are looking to do short-term rental forward, if it doesn't hit by the next deadline, then that means we'll see short-term rentals again next month.
Correct. So my understanding is that we are going to hear something by tomorrow, so we will at least.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. That's it.
That's it? All right, we adjourn.